Good evening.
Hello.
Janine is silent.
Hello.
Hi, Janine, how are you? I got your email, I'll respond either later tonight or in the morning.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
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 So Anne Marie, how much snow did you get?
I'd say about two or three inches.
At least it's pretty.
Yeah, and I mean, I just hope it doesn't rain and freeze up tonight, that's my only hope.
Yeah, understand.
Is it supposed to rain up your way tonight?
It depends on which forecast you look at, so.
I like the way they were so incorrect yesterday, thank you.
Yep. They got it right by the six o'clock news last night.
I talked to Terry DeSantis, she told me that they, she in Jersey had five inches of snow.
Wow.
And she's just, she's at the first exit on the Jersey Turnpike. Hello, Andrew.
How are you?
Good.
Lynn, Rob.
Hi, everybody.
I'm gonna turn the light up.
All we need is Tim, yep.
I'm gonna apologize for my cluttered background, we are painting in the other room, so we've got wall like stuff that should be hanging on the wall. But my husband, I'm in my husband's, so I'm on my husband's computer, which does not have any virtual backgrounds on it. Um, but you could hear the Grateful Dead in the background while he paints in the dining room.
Yes, the effects, the effects of the paint, the effects of the paint fumes.
When he starts singing along, we'll know that we're in trouble.
I'm gonna just check and see if Tim is in the.
I don't see, I don't see Tim over here in the attendees, we have thirty-one attendees at this point. Those of you who are attendees, I would just ask if you have not identified yourself with your full name, if you would do that, that would be most helpful. There's Tim. Hello, Tim.
Hey, there, Chad.
Okay, so I think we're all here.
Hello, everyone.
Evening.
And it is six thirty-one on Thursday, February the eleventh, and we're here for continuation of the regular February meeting of Mayor and Council. As you'll recall from our meeting on Monday evening, we left several items unaddressed, and we've had several, some items that we needed to come back to. I thank everyone who's in attendance for their willingness to work with us over a very long agenda that probably would have kept us here well past eleven o'clock, had we tried to tackle it all, and well past our ability to be attentive to the items, so I think this was a better approach, and I thank everyone for their participation and their patience with us as we work through this very long agenda. So the first item on the agenda is under unfinished business. It was the item H five on the original of February agenda, it's now alone as now, if you have the new amended continuation agenda, it's now B one, which is presentation possible action on an ordinance to amend Chapter forty, the municipal code of the city of Lewis regarding the Parks and Recreation Commission. As you'll recall, we talked through this at length on Monday evening, made some changes to it, and Anne Marie is pulling up the changes that we've made, so thank you very much, Anne Marie. You want to walk us through the changes?
Sure, so, um, we, I added, and I don't see the line numbers on here, so I apologize, that the Parks and Marina Administrator shall serve as an ex officia member of the commission, and that the mayor shall appoint, and city council shall confirm a chairperson for the commission, so we talked about that, and we specified that all members of the commission, except for the Parks and Marina Administrator, shall serve without compensation. In addition, I added Swan and Dell Park, which I inadvertently had left off, sorry about that, and added the urban forest as articulated in Chapter one seventy-seven, because that is extensive. It's the entire chapter puts the urban forest under the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, and actually, the date will have to be changed to the eleventh.
Is there any further discussion on this at the table? Anne Marie, I thank you for capturing, I think, in a very consolidated way, all the discussion that we had Monday night.
And I did talk to Janet about when the Parks and Recreation Commission meets on the twenty-second, having the idea of a commissioner for Great Marsh Park as part of their discussion.
Okay, great. Terrific. All right, is there, so there's no further discussion at the table, is there a motion regarding this item?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Okay. Thank you, Bonnie, you have a motion in a second, all those in favor. Rob, you have some discussions? Are you voting, okay, I didn't, but that hand, man, okay, all in favor, it's a Rob, it's, okay, everybody.
Hi.
Yeah, hi.
Thank you, all right, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. We then can move on to what was item H eight on the old, on the original agenda, and is now listed as item B two, which is presentation possible action or recommendation from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to replace double ballards at road crossings on Georgetown to Lewis Trail with single ballards. I'll offer a little bit of background on this particular item. When the trail was originally created, and this is the portion of the trail that's within the city limits, with crossings at several of the side streets, but also two very major crossings, one at King's Highway and Women's Savannah Road. And there was concern, and there was evidence to be concerned, that we were having ATVs and vehicles that were attempting to drive the trail. And as a result of that, the city made a request to Del Dot that the double ballards be installed, and also, we met with Secretary Cohen, Anne Marie and I did, and requested that they pull, even though they hadn't replaced all the ballast, or they hadn't replaced any of the ballast at that point, that they pull out the first twenty feet of ballast at any crossing and replace it with topsoil, so that we could create a grassy strip there. That's where the double ballards came from, they have served to deter the activity that led us to make the request. They also have served another purpose, and that is obviously somewhat of a encouragement for people to slow down as they approach those intersections. I can appreciate that they may be an obstacle, but they have been helpful in slowing people down. Andrew, I know you brought this forward on behalf of the commission, do you want to talk to it a little bit?
Yeah, I just think their desire is to, I guess the current standard is the single alignment with the two ballards, you know, aligned in a single row rather than side by side. And I think the language they use in there is it's difficult to pass, now, I think what is intended there is actually passing of the ballard, so when they pass the ballard, it feels unsafe, not passing, I think it's been discussed whether that means passing other bicyclists at these intersections, but I think it's intended to infer that it's a little unsafe as you pass through the middle of the ballard, so that's the thinking there. I realize, and I, we've articulated in the committee that there's still some unknowns here in terms of costs, you know, whether this new design is in fact safer, so we appreciate that, I think their desire is just to match the current design standard of Del Dot, that's where it stems from.
I can kind of give an update in terms of where we are at this point. I had a very good conversation with Anthony Alio at Del Dot today. He and I are actually gonna go out and walk and look at the specific areas and get, I can get feedback from them, and then they provided me an estimate that they had from where they did some of this work, and it was really high. So he was going to talk to some other people, reach back out to their engineering firm, and see if we can get some more realistic cost information. So my recollection is where we left this, is the council didn't want to make a decision one way or another without understanding the costs if we were to do it, so so hopefully, before the March eighth meeting, we will have that walkthrough to, you know, we're looking at trying to get something the first week in March.
So, given that we still don't have information on costs, it seems to me as though it might be best to defer any action on this until you have that information, is that the sense of the council? Or do you? And Bonnie, you guys are.
I feel like I'm in grammar school again, it's not a good place.
I'm not gonna go there.
Yeah, exactly, do you want to hear how I was traumatized by the uniforms we had to wear? No, you don't, but, nobody does. I just, I just, before this goes forward with, I don't want to leave the impression that the only concern that at least I have is about the cost, although that definitely is a concern. I'm looking at the pictures, and I've looked at these ballards as well, and I'm looking at the pictures, for example, picture six, page six of eight in the packet, and I'm watching, I'm looking at a photograph of a bicyclist going through the double ballards, and I am hesitant to remove these ballards, because I do think that they have, you know, that they have a salutary and desirable effect, which is to slow bicyclists down as they approach intersections, particularly on Savannah, I mean, there's pictures on page seven, eight, there's pictures all the way through, which are very helpful. But I think we need to sort of give some thought with respect to at least some of these, about whether it isn't a very good idea to slow, to slow bicyclists down as they approach in particular these major intersections, for example, on page yeah, six, above where you have the photo, the photo of the bicyclist going through, you've got what it looks like as you're going across Savannah Road. And I just, I just think that maybe it is a good idea to have people slow down for their safety, for the safety of pedestrians, and for the safety of vehicular traffic, so I mean, I've got an open mind on this, but I don't, I don't want to leave the impression that my only concern is the finances.
Yeah, I would, I would mention also that on the same page that we're looking at that Anne Marie's pulled up, you see someone going up onto the trail from Gil's Neck Road. That is one intersection where we had a problem with people coming down off of the trail onto Gil's Neck Road, and we actually had someone hit by a car. So these double ballards do have an impact of slowing people down, as you mentioned, Bonnie. So I get what you're saying, I think we weigh this both from a budgetary concern and also from a safety. And, you know, the one thing about Savannah Road, as you approach it from, I'll call it the north side, you have to make a a bit of a jog, so that has a calming effect, but as you, when you get on the other side, it really is pretty much, much more of a straight access, so and then there, on King's Highway, it's a very much a straight access of diagonal crossing.
Yeah, and the other, the other issue is, which I guess Anne Marie will talk about with Anthony, is the cost, but then the question is who pays it?
Right.
So.
Well, I got the answer to that one.
I have a feeling.
I have a feeling I know the answer.
So, what they've indicated is that we would pay it, now, you know, again, we could have more discussion about that, but that's that's where it was left the last time we talked about it, and that was not, we did not talk about who would pay it today, that was.
Yeah, I have a feeling we can talk about it all we want, but if Del Dot has said, look, we put in the ballers you asked for, if you want to change them, it's on you, I, that wouldn't surprise me much.
Anne Marie, may I?
I will say to Ted's point, I actually saw people going, driving on on the trail, so this was, as he said, this was a real problem, which we needed to do something to stop, so, I'm sorry, Tim, I interrupted you.
That's okay, I was just gonna bring to Anne Marie's attention, when she meets with Anthony, is that his first name or last name?
His first name is Anthony.
Okay, with Anthony, that on page four of this report, there is a photo of Gil's Neck Road West, that one, and there is no baller in that photo, so, and in the report that we received, he just, it breaks down the tent, you know, describes the different ballers, and then it says one has no ballard. I believe that's the image, a photograph of one without a ballard, and I think we should have a standard of having ballards or no ballards, whatever. There's got to be a reason why there's no baller there. Exactly, the trail ends there. That's the reason, it dead ends there at the road. Okay, so what are we telling the bikers to then transition to the road? That's what they are, that's what they have to do there, Tim. Okay, well, at the same places where we have crossings with roads and the trail, we do have ballards, so I'm just looking for standardization, that's all. That's all I'm suggesting. What you, that's the intersection of the Junction Breakwater Trail and the, and the Lewis to Georgetown Trail, they're perpendicular intersection. And then from there, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go forward, obviously, you're not gonna go across the road to, because the swing bridge doesn't exist as a functioning bridge, so you have to transition to on-road biking. Okay, well, all right, maybe it's not a concern, all right, thank you. So I think, my sense, if everyone is agreement, I think our sense is that we should get a little more information from Anthony's conversation with Anne Marie before we go any further. Is that what you want, and bring it back at March, to the March meeting, is that what you'd like to do?
Do you need to take a vote on that?
No, I think we do it by consensus.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. Okay, great, well, so we'll put that back on the March agenda, and hopefully by then we'll have some more information.
Can I ask one other question? Anne Marie, when you said Anthony said it was really high, did that come with a number?
It was, yeah, it was eight hundred fifty dollars for one of them installed, and but I, but I think there was something specific about the installation that he was showing me, and the other thing is, Del Dot has to use prevailing wait rates.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, all right, thank you, I look forward to more information.
Right. Then moving on to what was originally item H twelve from the Downtown Parking Committee, now known.
That was an error, sorry.
I thought it was, I thought we, I thought we, I was just gonna say, I thought we had addressed this and approved item item two, delineation of spaces, and the rest of them were all budgetary concerns.
Yeah, I forgot to take that off, that was my bad.
Okay, great. Okay, then we are now ready to move into the new business items, first one, and this pretty much follows the new business items that were known as in section I on Monday night's agenda, now they're item C, so C one is a presentation possible action, a report and recommendations of the Beach Parking Ad hoc Committee. This committee was chaired by Councilperson Morgan and Councilperson Riz, and I would ask them to take the lead in making the presentation on this. I note that there are many, there are many recommendations here, and we'll come back at the end to talk about how we're going to proceed with each, with the recommendations. There's a lot of, there's a lot of background information that will have to be obtained before we can act on most of these, and many of these items and the recommendations. So Rob and Tim, the floor is yours, Rob, you're muted.
I had that barking dog issue again, he saw a cat. Tim, do you want to take the leadership, you want me to start off?
By all means, go ahead, Rob.
Okay. Well, the mayor appointed the committee in September, we began meeting in October, and we had twelve meetings on Zoom. The members were Edin McGuinness, Linda Rathmaner, Dennis Reardon, Tim, Khalil Saliba, and I. And we are, I think we're all grateful to each other for all the work and, and time that the members put into this assignment. We received many comments from the public by email and through the chat, and we read them all, and emails are still coming in. If you'd like to comment today, please do so via the chat, and we will review the chat transcript as we have always done. The committee picked up where the previous Beach Parking Review Committee had left off in January of twenty nineteen. We issued our report and recommendations to the council on February third, not at a meeting, but that was the date on which we submitted the report, along with two separate reports, one by the two co-chairs, Tim and I, dissenting on parts of a couple of recommendations, and another separate report by the rest of the committee, to the effect that they would, would have liked more. And another separate report by the rest of the committee to the effect that they would, would have liked more information. All three reports are posted online, linked to this agenda. And rather than going through each one, which would take quite a while, what I'd like to do, Mayor, is skip to the recommendations in the majority report, of which there are eleven, and suggest how the council might proceed on them. If that's, um, agreeable.
Yes, the entire report is online and, and we do have, uh, at this point, at least one member of the committee has already, uh, submitted her own letter in addition to the, uh, the report. And I believe there are other members who may as well. So, okay.
Well, the, uh, there were eleven recommendations, as I mentioned. And they, um, what I think I'll do is suggest as to each one of what the, how the, the council might, uh, might, um, proceed. But wait until the end for a comprehensive motion, perhaps, that can be discussed and revised. The, and I'll read each recommendation so that members of the public don't have to try to download the, the report and follow along. One, annually restripe the lines delineating the parking space, spaces described in recommendation number seven of the first committee and the thirty-foot distances from stop signs on Cedar Street. This is a pretty easy one. In fact, the city manager said she'd be planning to do it anyway. But I figured, why not make a recommendation that's easy to achieve? So we're going to recommend that be approved. Number two, do not expand the paved parking lots at beaches one and two. This is, um, a repetition of a recommendation of the first committee. And I would recommend that be approved. I'm gonna skip to number four and get back to uh, three. Number four is, where feasible and the change would result in the creation of additional parking spaces, move mailboxes to a clustered location if permitted by the U.S. Postal Service. This follows up recommendation number six by the first committee. I can say that I've reached out to the supervisor of the Rehoboth Annex, who connected me to his, a district supervisor. But, um, that's as far as we've gotten so far.
Rob, if I could just make a comment here, this is, this recommendation is consistent with what we did on Bay Avenue at the time we redid the full rehabilitation of Bay Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. And we would recommend that be approved also. Number seven is, the council should favorably consider a permit system during high season on Lewis Beach, which includes designation of public parking spots and enforcement, with many details to be worked out, including capacity, comma, eligibility, comma, and cost if any. What we would recommend, or I would recommend, I actually, Tim can speak for himself. Uh, I would suggest that we ask the city staff to study how to design and implement a permit system during high season. As the recommendation itself states, this should, quote, include designation of public parking spots and enforcement with many details to be worked out, including capacity, comma, eligibility, comma, and cost if any. I'm not sure how if any got in there because there would of course be costs, including in fact the time that stat, we're asking staff to spend on the study. As part of staff's study of the, quote, designation of public parking spots, close quote, I suggest that they include rev, review of recommendations three, five and six. And let me read those. Number three, survey the streets between Cedar Street and the canal, not including the paper streets or open space lots, except to mark their corners. By marking the corners of all paved and paper streets, the city can also discern the right-of-way along Cedar Street. And a bracketed note in the report, the committee was tied three to three on whether to make this recommendation at all. Number five is long. The committee supports the current city right-of-way policy, especially with regard to its orientation toward prospective application and only where practicable. The committee would recommend that, A, the city's application of the policy be consistent. B, the city's implementation of the policy be prospective and that consideration be given to the city's actions with regard to the property on which the property owner may have relied. C, the policy be implemented and enforced. D, the implementation of the policy will result in a net increase in parking spots. E, the city take into consideration the importance of protecting and preserving trees and vegetation on Lewis Beach and enhancing safety of those traveling in vehicles, bicycles and on foot. And six, the paper streets and former paper streets now zoned open space on Cape Henlopen Drive and Cedar Street should remain status quo, but should not be improved for public parking. Again, three, five and six, I would suggest be subsumed under seven, which is to study a permit parking system because they all affect the designation of public parking spots. And in fact, number five also, uh, affects enforcement. So, that, yes, okay, I'm done on seven. Recommendation number eight, refer the issue of bicycling on Lewis Beach, including the creation of a bike lane and the issue of bike safety to the Lewis Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We would, I, I would suggest that, that the council approve that. That is, refer it to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, which is also now covering the former jurisdiction of the Traffic Safety Committee. Number nine, consider expanding the number of bike racks at beaches one and two and Roosevelt Inlet and place bike posts or racks at a few of the beach access rights-of-way as a pilot. And if they get used, add others. I would suggest that we approve that recommendation too. In other words, approve the recommendation that it be referred to the Bike Pad Committee for consideration. Number ten, no parking signage in Lewis Beach should be uniform and consistent. And priority should be given in the placement of signs to the protection of public safety, emergency vehicle access and ensuring that when parking is heavy, every street is still accessible to vehicle traffic. I suggest that we ask the city staff to inventory the signs on Lewis Beach, including their content, placement and condition and report back to the council for guidance. Number eleven, enforce the rules governing parking on Lewis Beach, giving special attention to compliance with any permit parking system. Parking with any designated, sorry, parking within any designated parking areas and parking within prohibited areas. I would suggest that we approve this recommendation with the understanding that enforcement resources, that is, more seasonal parking enforcement officers will be addressed in the budget meetings over the next month. So I would move the adoption of the recommendations I've specified, as I've specified them. And I would ask for a second so that we can move to discussion.
Just for, like, let's reiterate exactly which items it is that you're asking, uh, that we approve. That was one, two and four. Correct?
One, two and four.
Okay.
And let's take these, the easy ones, one, two and four, eight and nine, which is to refer them to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee.
Okay.
And eleven, understanding that the resources to bring about enforcement is a, is subject to budget
Okay.
considerations.
And the other things would be referred to city staff for consideration of how to implement their program. Is that correct?
And that's seven, uh, yes, that would be three, three, five, six and seven.
Three, five, six, seven, yeah.
All under the rubric of the permit system.
Right.
And finally, ten, we would approve, well, we would ask the city staff to inventory the signs as a preliminary step to carrying out, or considering carrying out, recommendation number ten.
Okay. All right.
And eight, nine go to Bike Pad, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Rob, are you, can?
Andrew, I'm sorry.
On ten, are you just suggesting that it's more broadly looking at all, all signage?
On Lewis Beach? Yes.
No, I mean, uh, uh, that does not be on no parking signage, you're saying?
Yes. Uh, but no parking signs obviously is the, is the focus, but I don't think the recommendation was limited to that. No, I'm sorry, it was. It was. No parking signage in Lewis Beach should be uniform and consistent, et cetera. So, um, I think you're right, Andrew, and thank you for pointing that out. Recommendation number, uh, ten was to ask, I, I should say, we ask city staff to inventory the no parking signs on Lewis Beach.
Right.
Thank you. And by the way, Janine, I've got this written down and I can send it to you, so you don't need to try to do scribble it all. I'll try to modify it as however it's modified by the council, such as the way Andrew just did.
Okay. All right, comments from the table. I just need to see for the second. No, we need a, we need a second, yes, on this motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. So now let's, if there's discussion at the table. First of all, thank you, Rob, and Tim for your work on this, and thank you to all the members of the committee. I know this is a very, uh, sensitive issue. Uh, there is a lot in this report. There is a lot of, there's a lot of different opinions about this. I think we, uh, there, we, there's a lot more to be learned before we get to implementing a parking committee uh, and, uh, parking permit, excuse me, uh, system, uh, and, uh, there, and how that would be funded, uh, is a, is a big concern, uh, because it is significant. I think we know that the surrounding communities who have parking systems, uh, or permit systems, have, uh, full-time staff that is available year-round in order to make their assist, their part, their permit systems function. So this would be, uh, submit, a substantial, uh, change in, in how we currently staff our parking, uh, situation. So. All right.
Can I just ask a, a kind of, we've got three reports here.
That's right.
Three, we've got a committee report, we've got a a concurring comments by four members of the committee and we've got separate statement by the co-chairs and the, uh, the concurring comments talk about a, a lot of information that, that I, I, I guess, that, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but that the, the four people who signed off on this think is necessary before you get to, as I understand it, before you get to any of the recommendations. The, then we have in the, uh, separate statement, we have four additional recommendations put forward by two members of the committee. So, do we need to go, Rob, do we need to go through all of these or, or what? Because it kind of, there's, there's kind of two questions here. I mean, a kind of a how and a what, which is, um, it seems clear that from what you're saying and, and from this multiplicity of, of comments here that additional work is needed, right? I think that's a fair statement. So that, the how question is, who does it? And you've recommended staff and I'm, I'm not sure I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that idea. Um, but then there's the, sort of the what, which is, what is needed, uh, in, in order to go forward. But before we get to any of that, can you just clarify that, uh, the status of these, these two additional documents produced by the committee or parts of the committee, so we know where they work with all of this?
I, I really can't, Bonnie. Uh, it, the separate statement by Tim and me was, uh, pointing out a couple of points on which we disagreed with the majority. And the, uh, separate statement by the majority was saying they'd like more information or would have liked more information, um, as part of the deliberations.
Okay, so, uh, the, well, then the four recommendations in the co-chairs' report, do, do you want us to take those up? And they're not from the full committee, so.
That's why I didn't address them.
Okay, so they don't have a status, I guess. Oh, oh, okay. Thank you for, for clarifying that.
I'm not prepared to, to, uh, accept the whole report. There's a couple here that, as you said, seemed like low-hanging fruit. But I, I personally don't think, without looking at the, you know, tape and, and everything else, that I'm ready to make recommendations to accept the, the full report in, in whole as it's written here.
You mean the report or the recommendations, Andrew?
The recommendations. I think you, I, I think there were some that you wanted to take on to, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, you're saying that you are recommending that we take action on and I would just say that some of those, um, you know, like you said, the re-stripping of what was already done, those kind of things, the referring, the bike issues, the bark, bike and pad, that seems, you know, low-hanging fruit that we could do. The others, to me, I think need some, uh, consideration.
Sure.
Well, can I, I, I agree with you, Andrew, that like, number one, annually restripe the lines, et cetera, that, that seems, I agree, completely easy to, to deal with. But for example, just even when you get into the, um, I mean, the bike racks, it would depend on, on, that's number nine, depends on, uh, you know, the cost and all that sort of thing. That, that seems, I agree, that seems something, like something we could refer. Number eight, on the other hand, uh, creation of a bike lane, that has a direct and potentially a, a direct and dramatic uh, effect on the availability of parking spaces.
It also, there's also another, there's also another piece of that, Bonnie. It would have to be done in conjunction with, uh, Del Dot, because that is a state.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna, I was gonna say that next. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know that that is actually something that it's fair to ask. Well, first of all, I don't think it can be disaggregated from the overall parking ball of wax, but I don't know that it's fair to ask, um, Bike Pad to take that particular one on. Well, I guess, I guess the, my basic question is, we've now had two committees. We've gotten, um, a, a lot of, uh, very helpful, um, feedback from the public. So, I, this strikes me as something that quintessentially needs to be done in the public with everyone having their say. And so I don't know that having this go in-house with staff and asking staff to develop it is the best process. I did want to mention two things, um, just as points of reference first. It, just so everybody knows, in the, uh, proposed budget, we are looking at having two dedicated parking enforcement officers for the beach. And those individuals will do, have, have two things. First, obviously to monitor parking and, and deal with the problem there. And second, to serve as a, as a, as a, the presence of uh, of the city on the beach and hopefully that will have a, um, a salutary effect on some of the behaviors that have been brought to our attention, um, with some of our visitors. Um, the other thing is, just this is, I checked on this because I wasn't sure. In the committee report on the, on page, actually mine doesn't have page numbers, so one, two, three, four, the top page five on my printout, where it says, this is a discussion of, um, Mr. Saliba's uh, suggestion on how to do a permit approach. It says, in, in adhering to the spirit of the Warner Grant, a limited number of pass. approach. It says, in, in adhering to the spirit of the Warner Grant, a limited number of passes would be available to purchase for visitors. I checked and other beach communities don't limit the number of passes. So, you know, that's just a, just a point of information. That's not the way it's done. Um, and with the Warner Grant, as, as a, it, a particular additional responsibility of the city, I, I just wanted to add, sort of offer that information. So I, I, I think, I hate to say it, but I think we probably need another committee.
Uh, well, I think, I think there is, there is some merit in staff bringing more information forward before we have another committee or before we have a public, uh, workshop, uh, to evaluate this, the proposal of going forward with the permit.
But is, is that, is that the stuff in the concurring comments, you think, that needs to come forward? All this information that was pointed out by the concurrents?
I think so. A lot of us there, you know. Uh, I think we, we need to know some things about what it would take staff-wise and, uh, guidance of, on, on how the permit system might work. Is it something that everyone in Lewis would get, would get permits? Uh, or would that be, uh, everyone in Lewis would, would, uh, would have the opportunity to, to purchase a permit? Uh, and would there be, how would that work in relationship to non-Louis residents? How would you administer that? Where would a person be, as you'll recall, in Rehoboth, they have a couple of places where people on, and, and can stop and buy a pass, a parking pass or a permit. Uh, how would we do that and where would we do it and what would it take? I think those are the kinds of things that staff could bring back to us as suggestions. Then we could have a public workshop that would provide a meaningful framework in which a permit system could really be explored. With a couple of comments in the, in the chat, which I'll read in a minute or two, uh, that talk about, um, the questions about paying for it and all that. Uh, but that's why I, I think there is some merit in asking staff to, to work on some of these items and bring it back before we have a public workshop or, uh, or a public hearing, uh, as to how we would go forward with the permit system.
I do think that we should work towards some of these solutions, though, for this.
Absolutely.
This summer, I don't think that we should work with the idea that it's necessarily something that we'll implement in the future, but rather work towards it, that potentially for the near future.
I agree. Emery, are you with us there, I think? Maybe she stepped away from.
No, I'm here, but my husband has triggered the smoke alarm, so I'm trying to keep myself on mute.
Don't get burned up.
Joy's exhume.
Okay, thank you. Have you given any thought to what, how much staff time and, and who all you would want to pull together to, to be able to shape a, what a permit system might look like?
So I've, I've actually given thought to a number of aspects of this. Um, and, uh, one, I think that the no parking signage absolutely needs to be done. And I think that, that, um, staff will do that. And I think what we'll end up doing is, um, inventorying them in our GIS system so that we have a clear record. So we, you know, so I've given thought to that. But really on, uh, number one is, again, I think, low-hanging fruit. To, you know, maintain what we, um, committed to previously. Um, I, I do think that staff could kind of do the legwork and start to develop a potential structure for a permit program, um, and delineating parking and then have something for a committee or the public or however council wants to do it to respond to, so that the, it, you don't have a committee trying to build from the ground up.
Right.
Uh, so I, I think that we could do some of the legwork on that. So, you know, I, I, my mind has been kind of moving around, putting together a working group of, that would include parking enforcement, um, maintenance, police, you know, the, the various departments that would be involved in getting this done. Because really, probably almost every department would have a role. Um, and, and, you know, break it down and then bring something forward that the, um, the public or a subsequent committee or whomever could, could use as a starting point to, to build on.
Okay. All right, I think.
The other thing I would say is, in a permit, you're talking about how is it paid for? Most places locally, the residents do pay a small fee or a, in some cases, a larger fee.
Right. Yeah, I think there has, there's gonna have to be some kind of a fee associated with this. Uh, and it's separate from, uh, a, a tax fee. And, uh, so I think that, uh, and basically we have one comment here that, you know, a fee would pay for the, would pay for the manpower and the other issues to set it up. That's possible. And I think we'd want, we'd try to structure, uh, the parking's pass system, so it would be self-funding. And, uh, any action like that would, we'd want to make it self-funding. Not everyone uses the beach. Many, many people do in the city, but, but I think we would want to make sure that is, to the extent possible, self-funding. And notice we have one comment in the chat about clustering mailboxes, saying that people don't want them. We don't have a definite answer on that. It has worked well on Bay Avenue, I believe. I think we're still waiting for information, um, from the, uh, the postal services to whether they would entertain that. So I think, uh, that's an, an item that we might want to not act on until we have the information from, uh, the postal service and come back to it. That might be something that we would consider in a workshop. There's a note here about, uh, presenting some things that, like item number three, about with the three, three vote, there was not a recommendation there. That I think is going, uh, in my opinion, based upon the way you've presented this, Rob, this item three, uh, would be a recommendation that would go back to, uh, whoever, the working group who would look at creating a parking, a permit system and whether or not, uh, that was necessary.
Yes, that's the street survey on the other side of Cedar. Yes, that would, that's part of what would be, um, the wo- working groups review to see how to designate parking spaces.
That's right. I have a question here about, uh, are, are other beaches comparable to Lewis Beach? Does the council have any idea of how much legal parking exists and how much is necessary? I, I don't, I think that I do not, I don't think I have any, an idea of how much legal parking exists. Did your committee come up with any firm numbers? I know Charlie used a, uh, several-year-old study. Did he, did he provide any more current information than that?
Uh, no, we, we were, um, we were divided about whether to continue looking at each individual street. Um, and even the ones we did look at, very difficult without getting out your, um, tape measure to figure out, uh, where there, how many parking spots there are on a particular street.
And there's a comment about Lewis Beach one and two are under the Warner Grant. They are. Um, and then as noted, a number of letters, council, the committee did not address an issue determining the capacity limits of Lewis Beach, nor did they count the actual number of available spaces. That goes back to the question I just asked you.
Well, actually, we did address the capacity question. We asked Charlie O'Donnell to give us his best, engineering opinion on that, and we got it.
Okay.
Was that capacity of the beach or capacity of parking spaces?
Capacity of the street.
That's what I thought, okay.
I, I saw that, uh, example. I, I'm not sure how scientific that, that exact, that and, uh, picture was and, and sort of using that as a capacity measure. Uh, and beyond that, I think the main issue is around the capacity of the automobiles. You know, I think regulating how many individuals go on the beaches is an issue. I think the safety issue is twofold. It's the environmental impact of the humans on the beach. But the space that the cars take up and how that affects the safety of the humans trying to get to the beach or to their homes.
Right. There's a comment here about consistent signage permit parking should be posted at all public beaches, including Cape Shores. So noted. There's another comment about the fact that we, uh, Beach One and Two are under the Warner Grant and we're already charging for parking there. Here's a comment that said, uh, as a former resident of Rehoboth, parking permits are mailed to all residents of the beach, in the beach blocks for free. The chat is, uh, is not visible to everyone. We are reading, uh, what's in the chat. The chat will be part of the minutes.
Hey Ted, the other thing is, we should probably, for Janine, we need to make, if it's part of the minutes, uh, we have to make sure that people who have, who submitted comments properly identify themselves. It'd be helpful if we had their addresses.
Provide an address, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the way we would in a regular, you know, meeting.
Meeting, right. Uh, there's this comment about the age of the, of, of the beach capacity being 10 years old. Another comment here about social distancing in light of the pandemic. I think all those things are, are noted. Uh, here's another question about, shouldn't we answer the question about legal parking? We, how much legal parking we have, uh, and how much we, we need based on beach capacity at high and low tide. And I think that's all the current chats that we have at this point. I don't, did the information Charlie provided, Rob, offer anything about capacity difference between high and low tide?
No, he didn't address the, the high and low tide.
I didn't think so, yeah.
That, uh, for the record, uh, that, uh, the photos that he worked from, uh, as I recall, uh, were taken on July 3rd. Uh, so they were not July 4th, not the actual holiday, but certainly, you know, associated with the holiday and, uh, he, that's how, what he based his study on.
Are we gonna take, um, comments? Cause there, there are some folks, I think, that have their hands raised in the chat and whatnot.
I think we're, we're, we're gonna do is, we've had over thirty letters already. Uh, and I would encourage people to write in their comments, cause I think the, the limited action we're gonna take tonight, uh, or the limited actions that Rob has proposed, uh, Rob and Tim have proposed, is something we can act on. I think there's pretty much concerns on that. I would encourage everyone to write their comments, uh, in the interest, and we're gonna come back to this whole thing. Uh, and I hope in the near, in the not-too-distant future with a, um, a public workshop, uh, or a public hearing, whichever we feel is going to be the most appropriate way to have this, uh, so that we can hear from everyone. And, but I think we need more of a framework to offer the public before we start, uh, in, in, in terms of what do we think, where we think we can go with this. Yeah.
Agreed.
I, I think if we, if we, we'll get, we'll get mired in, uh, in a lot of details that I think we, we can answer before we ever, before the, and then we can provide, more information to the public, which would help frame questions probably in a more, you, uh, productive way. All right. So, uh, back to the, your recommendations, I think, um, you have, we have a referral here, uh, to staff for the development of the framework of a parking system in light of several items on the agenda that would be subs- subsets of developing a permit system. Uh, and then the acceptance of items one and two. Uh, I don't know how you would feel about item four, uh, relating to the clustering of mailboxes. Obviously, we had the one comment, I'm not sure, uh, how others' people feels, maybe that's something that should go on a workshop as well. Uh, the referral of, uh, bike racks to the, uh, Bike Ped Committee for consideration and discussion. Uh, and the, uh, item eleven, enforcing the rules governing parking. And item ten, uh, the no parking signage on Lewis Beach be uniform and consistent. Those are the things I think we could consider, entertain taking action on, uh, and the others could be referred.
Ted, I, I'd really prefer it if, there's only four of these that.
Okay.
I'm willing to vote on in terms of, we're gonna, the referrals, okay, but what I, what I'd ask you to do is go through these things one by one.
Okay, that's fine.
Because, for example, I get one, two, nine and 10, uh, I have no trouble with.
Okay.
Eleven, the, it's the special, uh, special attention to compliance with any parking permit system. I, I just don't think, or permit parking system, I'm sorry. I'm just not sure it's, it's ready.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, if, if, if it's the will of council that this go and be worked on in-house, uh, with staff, I'm certainly not gonna stand in the way. It makes me uncomfortable, particularly given the obvious, um, level of public interest in this issue. But I think what we have to, uh, promise folks down, down the road is that this stuff is all gonna come forward from staff. We'll all have, uh, more information, although, you know, thanks again to the committee for, for developing the report and accompanying documents that were submitted. But I, I'd really much rather if we do these one by one.
Okay, we can do them one by one, I think.
I, Mayor, I need to interrupt you. The, the motion was a package of approvals and referrals, so I, I think either that motion has to fail or it needs to be withdrawn.
Rob, if you're willing to withdraw it, so am I. I'm happy to go one by one.
Okay. Tim, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so then let's take them one at a time. Uh, the first item on the, uh, to be considered is the annual restriping of the lines delineating parking spaces. We have a motion on that.
I, I move that we approve item, uh, number one.
Okay. All in favor? And the opposed, motion carries. Item two, do not expand the paved parking lots at Beach One and Two.
I move that we approve recommendation number two.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor.
This was a unanimous decision out of the committee?
Yes, I think.
And it was the, yes, and it was the same recommendation that the first.
Previous. I'll vote aye.
Any one of, any opposed to that? Motion carries. Item three, survey the streets between Cedar and the canal. This was a split decision.
I, I move that we refer that to staff for further development.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Item four, where feasible and the change would result in the creation of additional parking spaces.
I was gonna vote nay on, on three, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry. You wanna vote nay on three? So, she carries four to, four to one. Sorry, I didn't catch that, Andrew. The, item four is feasibility and change would result in creation of additional parking spaces, move the mailboxes to cluster. Is there a motion on that?
I move that we refer this to staff, because there's multiple subparts of it that I think need further development.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the opposed, motion carries. Item five, committee supports the current city right-of-way policy, uh, especially in regard to the orientation towards prospective application. And only where practical, the committee would recommend, and there's a whole list of recommendations here. This all gets to the permit system.
I move that we refer, refer this to staff for further development.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Mayor, um, may we have discussion?
We, we need a second first, Rob. I'm sorry, Andrew, I didn't catch it, okay? All right, so then let's have some discussion, Rob.
Yeah, number five was, uh, one of the two recommendations that Tim and I disagreed on. We agree with most of it. But the, um, recommendation as in the majority report stresses that it would have prospective application. But the city policy now doesn't have purely prospective application. In fact, I think it's, uh, paragraph four, as I recall, says, review. the existing impediments with the seat to see what's practical to remove. So I'm in favor of the staff reviewing number five, but I would note that it's inaccurate to to interpret the policy that were that number five approves as saying it's prospective. So with that qualification, which is a personal one. Um, I would my I seconded, I will favor it.
Actually, Andrew seconded. So, okay.
I said it first. You thirded it.
We had two seconds, okay? All right, so we have a motion and and multiple seconds, all in favor.
I.
I.
I. Item six is paper streets and former paper streets now zoned open space on Cape Penlope Drive and Cedar Avenue should remain status quo. Is there a motion on that?
I'm sorry, Rob, can you clarify? Is this is this is one of the ones you wanted to have send to staff, right?
Yes.
It it was on behalf of the committee. Personally, I oppose it because I think it ought to be part of the mix.
Well, if if we've got the majority, if we've got members of the committee who who had disagreements, I I I would also remind people that or anybody, counsel, anybody else that we had two separate other committees to look at um, what to do with the paper streets and I believe it was in the second committee. We looked uh, at specifically these five Cape Penlope and the 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 five paper streets off of Cape Penlope Drive. And with respect to all the ones on Cedar, um, we zone them open space. I don't believe we de I don't remember, I hate to say, but I don't believe we decommissioned. Uh, for sure, not Alaska. And I don't my recollection is that we did not decommission the five paper streets off of Cape Penlope and Drive.
Your recollection is accurate.
Yeah, so in fact, they are still streets.
That's correct.
So uh, so with that, it it is a tangled web, these paper streets. But all I wanted to remind people of is there was a long exploration of these streets in that prior report, prior to these two committees, probably way back when we were trying to figure out what to do with paper streets. So maybe we should send this to staff to to uh, to take another look at just just to straighten out what's what. Because there's there's a lot of streets.
I would second that.
Oh, no, it's already been moved and seconded.
Been moved and seconded, yes.
Or I think, not sure.
Yeah, it has.
Yeah, moved a second to send it to staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a there is a question in the chat around what what does it mean that when we're saying refer to staff, it may be worth clarifying what what's gonna come out of there?
Well, I think what I think what we heard Anne Marie say is she was going, it would involve most of some component of almost every department within the city government. So it would be involved uh, the parking enforcement people involved, the police, involve obviously Anne Marie. Uh, as well as the streets department, uh, the maintenance department uh, would would all contribute to a recommendation or putting together a proposal that we would bring back to to us and to the public for consideration uh, in a public workshop shop or in a um, in a public hearing.
I want to reassure everybody, I will be making no unilateral decisions on these issues. It it's more just kind of developing things a little more fully so they can be vetted.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Does that answer your question? I think that answers.
Yeah, I think I think that's what people just wanted to hear. It just gives us, it gives the council more information than we have now to make our decision, yeah.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on then to item seven.
So there wasn't a motion on number six, though?
There was a motion and a second on six. We didn't take the vote.
Okay.
All in favor of item six.
I. I opposed.
Okay, then let's move on to item seven, which is council should favorably consider a permit system using high season of Lewis Beach during high season of Lewis Beach. This basically, I think, has to go to.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Send it to staff.
I think we're gonna send this one to staff.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, we've got a motion and a second to approve it, so.
But it's the breakfast with the recommendation to go to staff, I believe. Is that not right, Andrew?
Andrew, clarify your motion if you would please. Was your was your recommendation to approve it as it was written or was it always a to send it to staff?
If people are ready to approve it, I'll I'll make that that motion.
Then I did not second that. I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Do we have a second for Andrew's motion to approve it?
May I ask a question, Andrew? Would you please, you're suggesting you're asked, your motion is to approve it as.
It just says favorably consider it.
I I don't, I can't favorably consider it until I have more information. I can't favorably or unfavorably. I I think that's the whole idea
Right.
behind sending it to staff. Then we'll all have more information.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion then if it's if I'm not gonna get a second. And I'll make the motion to send this consideration of this to staff for more details.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
I. I.
And he opposed. Okay. Moving then on to item eight is refer to the bicycle uh, the issue of bicycling on Lewis Beach. To the Bike Ped Committee.
Well, it's a little more detailed than that. It's review the it refer the issue of bicycling on Lewis Beach, including the creation of a bike lane and the issue of bike safety to Bike Ped. I I would make a motion that we send this to the staff, but the staff consult with Bike Ped as part of their review.
I think I would suggest you expand your motion to Del Dot as well.
Done, done, of course, Del Dot. Thank you for that.
Is there a second?
So it's the staff and Del Dot.
I think it was referred to the to the staff for consultation with Bike Ped and Del Dot, if I heard Bonnie right.
You did.
Okay.
Right.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
I would um, I would prefer to send it to Bike Ped. I think they've, in fact, they've got um, good experienced, trained people on that and they they can consult with Del Dot and staff. We're putting an awful lot on staff.
This is a big task, there's.
That's what I had a question, I love you can parse out just the bike racks piece because uh, again, thinking about potentially low hanging fruit and things that we could implement. But.
That's that's number nine, isn't it, Andrew?
That's the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were tying those together. Okay. Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
So we have a, okay. So do we have a friendly amendment? Is that what Rob has put forward?
No, I'm um, I was I was gonna going to suggest that we stick with my original suggestion of giving it to Bike Ped, but I I see no harm in in going with what Bonnie has suggested, so. I I don't know, Bonnie, did you ever get a second?
I did. Yes, Rob, Tim did.
Okay, then.
We have a motion and a second, Rob, are you, we have a further discussion at this point?
No, not from me.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor.
I.
And he opposed. Then the next item is consider expanding the number of bike racks of Beach one and two at Roosevelt Inlet with bike and place bike posts or racks at a few of the beach access right of ways.
Now, I thought that Rob originally folded that one into not which is number nine into number eight. So Rob, i- is this it doesn't say in the in the committee report that this is a would be a something to refer to Bike Ped is so where where are you on that? Is is this is a staff issue or Bike Ped issue or what's your thought?
I think it's a, um, you're right, that the recommendation doesn't say refer it to Bike Ped. But um, and just so that everybody can hear it, the issue is consider expanding the rec- the number of bike racks at Beaches one and two and Roosevelt Inlet. And place bike poster racks at a few of the beach access rights of ways of pilot. And if they get used, add others. I would, to me, that's in the Bike Ped Committee's sweet spot.
Yeah.
And I would, I would suggest that referring it to Bike Ped is a good way to uh, to tee that up.
I I I agree. I would also ask that that Bike Ped give, you know, look into some information about what this is, how to do this and what it would cost because it just in thinking about placement of of bike racks down there, I don't know if they'd have to pour uh, a concrete slab or what to to properly anchor them, so it's gonna take a little homework.
Okay. They could look at it. I think we could, in in terms of funding it, with this is something that we could possibly look at or can have asked to be considered as a CTF funding.
Might be a grant opportunity, too, it's possible.
Exactly. Yeah, I think this could possibly be a a good fit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the motion is.
CTF, a CTF grant, I meant a more broadly other grant opportunities, just to be clear. You're right. So.
So the motion here is.
Did we move? I was gonna.
No, we haven't yet.
But if, Rob, do you want to? You want me to?
Please go ahead.
Uh, okay, I I would move that we uh, refer to the Lewis Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The the question of expanding the number of bike racks at Beach one and two and Roosevelt and Roosevelt Inlet, two different things. And the placement of bike posts or racks at uh, a few of the beach access right of ways as a pilot program. Then I I'm gonna leave out the rest of it. By the way, the private pilot program, we decide what to do with it. So that would be my my.
That is your motion?
That is.
Delete the last phrase.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that?
We'll definitely do more.
Absolutely, it's sort of self explanatory.
Yeah.
Right. So is there is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Thank you, Rob.
I.
All in favor.
I.
And he opposed. Okay, moving on to item 10. No parking signage uh, at Lewis Beach uh, should be uniform and consistent and a priority should be given to the pla- in placement of the signs. Uh, to the protection of the public safety, emergency vehicle access and uh, and ensuring that when parking is heavy, every street is accessible to vehicular traffic. I think uh, this was one we were going that that I think Dan Marie indicated the Streets Department is already working on this to some extent.
I was gonna suggest we just put the no parking in quotations, though, because otherwise it just reads that no parking should sign is should be uniform.
Okay.
I think Anne Marie already, Anne Marie already uh, moved and seconded this one and voted in favor of it and took it away.
Okay. So maybe we need to formalize that, though, so she has direction.
I agree.
So it's, so is there a motion? Bonnie, was that a motion?
I'll second it.
I I guess it was.
Okay. All right, all in favor.
I.
And then the last one, item 11 is enforce the rules governing parking on Lewis Beach, giving special attention to compliance with any permit uh, parking system, parking within any designated parking areas and parking within prohibited areas. I think this is another one that goes to staff for consideration, but that's the way I thought we went with this conversation.
Yeah. Rob, can you remind, is this also relevant to the idea around enforcing parking, how park, how close you can park to stop signs and things like that as well? This.
Take another look at it.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I think it's not limited to. It says, yeah, it it would include that.
Because I I would think that this one should be considered, even if we don't go forward with permitting, uh, we'll wanna ensure that we capture that the whatever rules are in place should be enforced.
I I agree, and I think it's also a a clear and strong direction to these uh, two additional parking enforcement officers we're contemplating hiring for the summer.
Which is a budget issue. Right.
Right.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to enforce it regardless, but um, I mean, I I would move approval of item recommendation 11.
That's that's who I was leaning that way.
Okay.
Then I second his motion.
Yeah, well, I'll second yours, yeah.
Yeah. All right, Janine could figure out who did motion and who did the second, okay? We, it's ready to further discussion this. I don't think there needs to be. Hearing none, uh, all in favor.
I.
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 Okay. And he opposed, motion carries. Thank you. As as I said, and there's questions in in the, there are additional questions in the chat, will Roosevelt Inlet be permit parking also? And another question, I guess Anne Marie answered it regarding Roosevelt Inlet and perfect parking that will be part of what the review and bring forward to the public for discussion. So that's exactly the answer that I was hoping to give, but Anne Marie's already got it there. So yes, Roosevelt Inlet will be part of the consideration. Thank you again to all the committee members. As we did say, there are, there is a dissenting or a comment uh, from some members of the committee, separate from uh, as well as Rob and Kim's, and they're all on part of the record. Uh, and we have had, as I mentioned, over 30 uh, individual emails from individuals who live on the beach or use the beach uh, regarding this committee's work. Uh, they're all part of the public record and Janine will be posting them probably tomorrow uh, as part of the, whenever the the minutes are posted. I'm not sure the minutes will be fully posted tomorrow, but certainly the comments will be posted. If there's no further comment on the parking committee, I would move that we, we would suggest that we'll move on then to item C two, which is presentation discussion regarding the development of an ordinance to establish criteria for review of historic artifacts in the CH zone. Uh, as everyone will recall, uh, the Historic Society has relocated the Manhattan Reel in in the into onto their grounds and uh, it was deemed uh, there was nothing in the guidance or in the H Park regulations that addresses an artifact or a relic versus in versus a structure. Uh, that was part of the discussion that has been had and um, thinking that this, that the Manhattan Reel is actually an artifact more than a structure. And uh, I think the thinking is that we need, we need better clarification as to what would, what, how would an artifact be defined and what regulations would pertain to the placement of an artifact in the CH zone? So I know there's been a lot of discussion about this uh, at several different committees. Uh, and I think the opportunity here is to get clarification of what is an artifact or a relic? How is it defined and what would be uh, the terms of how it might be placed within the CH zone? Uh, I think there's an opportunity for us to ask H Park to work uh, work with Historic Society and and the council to develop a better definition or a clear definition as to uh, what the what might be defined as an artifact and how it would be viewed in terms of placement, dimensional quality, dimensional characteristics. Uh, and how it would fit into the H, the CH zone. I would uh, ask for comments from the table if there are any.
Uh, well, I'll throw one in it. Just to be clear, uh, under our current code, this is a structure and therefore was in H Park's jurisdiction. Um, but I agree with you, mayor. I think the only entity within the city that is 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 equipped to deal with this issue and work with LHS is the city's expert in the area and that's H Park, so I mean, I'll make, I don't want to cut off, I'll I'll make a motion if you want me to now or later, but maybe make it now and then we can.
We get a motion in a second.
Well, let me, let me, I I would move that we refer this this question uh, to the Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Commission for uh, for review and prep and uh, Preparation Recommendation Council.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Have an ordinance that we're looking at?
We don't. We're not, this is not about an ordinance. Bonnie's motion. We don't. We're not, this is not about an ordinance. Bonnie's motion is to refer it, to refer the consideration of developing a definition of, I believe, Donnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but to develop a, a, a definition of what an artifact or a relic would look like and what the dimensional qualities would be and how they would fit on, onto the site.
Right, well, just, just to be clear, we, we, no, we, we have no, we have no nothing. We, we don't have any language. We don't have any, anything and no one on this council, as far as I know, knows anything about what, what historic artifact, uh, definition would be. So the, the question is how best to look at this issue, in my opinion, is how best to look at this issue and who should develop some ordinance language if appropriate for us to consider. And so my motion was that we send that question to H Park for them to examine and if appropriate, prepare ordinance language and send it back up to us for review, you know, for adoption.
Can I add partly to that? The, um, the, the, the argument that LHS has made is that the standards that are set out in the city code right now for review of historical structures don't adequately address things like historical artifacts. Their argument has been that the standards were developed with a thinking towards new construction, renovation of historic property, those sorts of things, without really giving thought to historic artifacts. And do the standards that have been developed now under that, under our current code, do those standards have applicability to historic artifacts? Or do they need to be, did standards need to be developed that would better address things like historic artifacts? So I think if it gets referred, that would be kind of the question. H Park would say, are our existing standards adequate to address these sorts of things? Or should we develop a separate set of standards that would look toward something other than a traditional, you know, residential structure that LHS argues is what our standards were developed for?
And would this in essence qualify LHS to make a reapplication to H Park for consideration for permanent placement in that area? Or could the, in the H Park-
So I mean, that would be one possible outcome. Sure.
Yeah, I think, I, I think H Park has made a decision on the reel as it sits now and that decision stands unless something comes back and there's a reapplication of some sort that would be, that would allow the reel to be applied to the new standards. If that's the direction council ends up going.
So in fact, we would be suspending the, I think there, uh, isn't, uh, LHS working under a, a, um, deadline coming up next month?
The fifth of March.
The current extension is the fifth of March, yes.
Well, I agree with you, Tim. I think that the deadline would be suspended while this review is ongoing.
Right. I just wanted to make sure what, we had all the pieces of the puzzle identified here.
We make, Bonnie, Bonnie, would you, could you amend your motion to, to make that provision that, that while this is under consideration that they would, the-
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy to. I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't been seconded yet, so absolutely.
Talking about it.
Yeah, sure. No, I, I, I mean, it would be, it, it would be illogical for the city to move forward under the H Park decision while H Park is, is, and LHS are, are thrashed through this. I mean, that would make any sense. So yeah, absolutely.
It, what, can you take a minute and describe to me what, uh, is this an unusual situation where we're contemplating a change in the ordinance in the code by putting an outside group together with a, a, a commission that, you know, serves the city? In other words, with LHS working directly, that's what you're proposing, right, uh, Bonnie?
LHS-
I feel like we're getting too far into the discussion phase and I, I was part of it and I apologize, but so, so really I think you should try to get a, a second for whatever motion. I'm sorry. And then for purpose, I'll, I'll second, so we can discuss. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're, you, go ahead. So Tim, you want to finish your question?
I, I think Bonnie understands what I was asking. Uh, so please, Bonnie, if you would respond.
Well, LHS, I mean, it's unusual in that we, th- this is an unusual way for, uh, an applicant to H Park to try to challenge a decision. I mean, under our rules, there are two procedures and LHS has, has not chosen, you know, to, to go for either of them and they've, they've opted for this third idea. So, uh, you know, I think, okay, I, I'm not going to reject it out of hand, but I think we should have H Park take a look at it. So is it unusual? I, I wouldn't say, I mean, usually there's some group or, or individual who wants, you know, this, the city to do something or stop doing something. And, uh, we typically refer things to, you know, to the groups within the, the city who have primary original jurisdiction over such issues. So I, I, I don't know, that's not much of an answer to your question, but I, I guess, no, I don't. It's an unusual situation, but I don't think it's an unusual procedure that-
Okay, and by, and, and by, if we were to approve this, uh, we are not signaling to the community, to LHS or to anyone, uh, any party, what are, what outcome we expect from their process?
Oh, absolutely not.
Right, okay.
At least on, no.
All right, okay, just want to make sure that's understood.
I think Tim's point is a good one, that this can be seen in two ways. It can be seen as the city weighing in and suggesting to H Park what it ought to do, or it can be seen as the city acknowledging the primacy of H Park to which it's, which it's already statutorily created by making appeals from H Park only to the Board of Adjustment and not to, not to ourselves.
Right.
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 And I, I think it's fair to regard this as the latter. Acknowledging the authority of H Park and, uh, deferring to their expertise rather than in signaling that, uh, we have our own opinion.
I, I agree with what, everything you just said, Rob.
Okay.
I'm going to make note of that, Bonnie. Hold on.
Okay, is there any further discussion at the table? We have several-
I will say-
There's a lot of stuff in the chat.
Just, just an editorial point. Point for our own code, um, it says that the, it says H Park's jurisdiction is over Lewis with an I. So they may not have jurisdiction to begin with based on that, so.
That's a good catch of the top. All right, before we take the vote, let me read what's in the chat. Um, this, this one says, uh, also could it be considered a tool or a piece of machinery? Uh, H Park is not open to suggestions or alternatives.
Hey, Ted, would you please call out the names of the people who are making these comments?
This came from, these came, these two companies, whole series of comments came from Alicia Jones.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and they, uh, they are not the expert on Manhattan industry and is there no public comment? I think the opportunity for public comment on this, if we refer it to H Park, will come during the H Park meeting as they consider what would be a relic or an artifact and how it might be defined and how it might be interpreted or play, possible placement, uh, on, in the HC zone. I think that we're really just trying to find a path forward here. And then from Michael Serafina, uh, so, you know, we have historic artifacts, wouldn't they be evaluated on a case by case basis? Again, I think that would come out of the definition, uh, that, or whatever H Park would might, uh, and then Alicia Jones, uh, again, would, uh, you let people talk about parking it, I'm not being recognized. I don't think we let people talk from the audience about parking. We read comments. Uh, and did any of the panelists listen to the H Park application? I believe, uh, the majority of us did. I, I know I did part, I listened to three quarters of it at least. I know Bonnie was there. Uh, I think, Tim, you were there. I don't know, Rob, were you there or not? Maybe, you may have listened to the meeting on recording since then. I don't know. Uh, and Andrew, I don't know if you were there or not. Okay. And it may be difficult to establish a standard for artifacts, guidelines for how to consider them might be more appropriate. That's a good comment that came from Michael Sefina. And again, from Alicia Jones, they used the street tape and, and the streetscape height and rhythm to make the decision. Uh, and then from, oh, uh, this one, uh, doesn't have a name on it. Standards for address, uh, standards are to address streetscape, not so much the nature and particular object, which has a different status.
Cliff Diver, Ted.
Uh, yeah, what'd you say?
I think that was Cliff Diver.
Okay, I didn't see Cliff's name. Again, from Alicia Jones, uh, why are we not allowed to speak? Bonnie, could you say more about, could you say more, but as you-
I'll say nothing.
Yeah, I see that. And again, uh, again, whites decide what happens in the black neighborhood. Uh, that's from Alicia. Rachel, uh, or can other applicants also follow this third route in the future with bypass H Park? I think we're talking about, uh, in the HC zone, we're talking about very specific item here. Again, uh, from Alicia Jones, they have no expertise. And then, uh, from Cliff, there's Cliff. So defining an artifact, uh, does not help much unless you say how you want to treat it. You treat each one differently. Okay, so that's, that's what's in the chat at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there any further comment here regarding the motion and the second that are on the, on the table?
I, did it, was it seconded?
Yeah.
Andrew's seconded.
Thank you, Andrew.
So we have a, a motion to refer this.
I'll just say that, um, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and comment. Um, I think this is one of these difficult things where it's, as a council person, I, I may like it there and they want it there, but it's, it's not the prescriptive route there. It's, it, you know, it's, this isn't in our wheelhouse to, to make that call whether it can stay. And so I think as, as Ted pointed out, we're trying to have a way forward here, um, where the process can maybe be reset. Um, and that's how I see wha- what I can do here. I don't think I have the power as a council person simply to make the decision whether it can stay there, uh, um, but I think as Bonnie's made the motion that i- if these two organizations potentially can work together to define it, that will allow them potentially to go back for the process and then involve potentially, if H Park denies it again, then you have the Board of Adjustment. It, it is an unfortunate situation that, that, that we're in here and I'm, I'm actually thankful for it because it has created a dialogue which is important. Um, and it's made us, it's forced us to, um, recognize, for those who have not, what our history, uh, is and, and was. Uh, so, um, I'm not sure where this relic wound up, but I'm, I'm thankful for this having happened because it reminds us of our heritage and, um, I hope these two organizations can work together because we're neighbors.
Thank you, Andrew.
Well said.
Thank you very much.
Well said.
Thank you. Appreciate you, um, making that statement. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Very good. We look forward to the, uh, H Park and the LHS working together to find a, a, a path forward here to better define, uh, an artifact or a relic. And coming back to this council for our consideration and hopeful approval of whatever is recommended or consideration anyway. So thank you. Again, Andrew, thank you very much for your comments. And thank you for those who submitted comments in the chat. This will be back and when it comes forward, uh, there will be an opportunity for the public to participate in the H Park, uh, meeting where that would, they will take it up. And there will also be an opportunity when that recommendation comes forward to council for, for public comment at that time. Moving then on to item C3 is presentation possible action on a recommendation from the Public Art Committee regarding an art exhibit in Canalfront Park. And I think Cliff Diver is with us. Uh, and this one, uh, I think if we could bring Cliff into the discussion a little bit, uh, to talk to us about this. This is coming directly from the committee. Cliff?
We, we have a raised-
I can't hear.
While we're getting started here.
Sorry, my mouse wasn't working, so it took me a while, but he should be able to-
All right, how about this? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, um, this, uh, I, I believe you have received a bunch of, um, a little more background material than this, which is not the most flattering piece, but, um, while we're doing a sort of continuing our program as, um, we stated last year and, um, we are doing a piece in the park for an educational experience and it's temporary. And, um, it is a, an artist from, um, Washington DC, originally Pittsburgh and now New York. And, uh, this is a piece of sculpture which we found to be considerably, um, different than the last project we had, which was very well received. And I think that, uh, this one is going to be a little more contemplative. It's a hundred and ten inches square approximately and maybe sixty-five inches tall. So it's not huge and, um, the, its components are designed to evoke rather than illustrate. And, um, I think that, uh, the artist can give, is going to give it to us a little longer because, because she's going to move, so we'd get it in April through the end of, uh, through the end of, after Labor Day. Weighs six thousand pounds. Um, it's obsidian and rope. So, um, I think that it's very hard to judge what this would be like without seeing it and that's kind of the point. And we've had, um, both good and bad feedback, which is what we want. Built a little bit of a dialogue and we've already gotten some good press from television and, um, and, and the online stuff. We can't do too much till we get your approval. So we're asking for your blessing to go ahead with the project of your committee, your city, you know, this is done under your Aegis. And, um, so we're just asking for you to say, hey, great, go ahead, Cliff.
Got it.
Any questions?
Questions from the table.
If I think the, um, the part that's not shown on the screen is the description and commentary on the piece. There it is. Probably too small for people to read.
Um, well, listen, I, I mean, uh, I, I, I was encouraging, we have a great deal of information on, on the website and, um, and we also had a, a very, uh, a long article in the Cape Gazette, which I'm assuming that you might have looked at. Uh, did you, did anybody see that?
I did.
Because that, that, you know, that's where you, I mean, I, I didn't want to, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's more informational than anything else. But, um, I feel like what we're doing here, uh, this particular project, um, the, the, did I, and I sent, uh, I think I sent you all, I know I sent you all individually, uh, the press release uh, about how it was chosen and, um, the description that I wrote is, we think this object with nautical ropes and stone as found in our jetties will slip naturally into our chosen location. The piece will appear innocently to, in the viewer's landscape, who eventually realizes its quirkiness and will hopefully want to decipher its clues to find more meanings. Might it be that bounded as the theme intended or not relates both to our current COVID-19 existence as well as our struggles to establish a unity in the current political environment? Uh, to me, it also speaks to the struggles of environmental justice. I know, as you look at these parts of the environment, it definitely will feel pretty natural there with the maritime ropes and the rocks that look like our jetties. I know as you look at these parts of the environment, it definitely will feel pretty natural there with the maritime ropes and the rocks that look like our jetties. And, um, the, uh, the woman, if it goes well, I think we, we'd love to do an opening, but with COVID, what we're thinking now is that we will have a closing ceremony, hopefully get the artists back, you know, and have a little more public discussion, which might be fun after people have already experienced it and can share more about what they got out of it rather than just what the artist intended. Um, and, um, and we know, and, and we picked this piece we, uh, in the, in the news journal and, and we're in the Cape Gazette article and also on the website. Uh, there was a view of maybe eight or 10 different other things that we looked at. The committee voted, uh, there were five or six people in the committee and we voted for five or six different pieces, but this was vote number one or two of every committee member. So we had a pretty uniform, uh, acceptance of this. And we really wanted to do something different that wasn't quite just fun and, and, and like the, the mural and something a little more serious and just, you know, see what the reaction was. We're still in the testing stage. We're still, this is a part of our three-year plan is to try and do some educational stuff, see what the feedback is, see what the level of interest is. Because we have a lot of people who are pretty passionate about this kind of stuff. Certainly not the majority at this point, but, um, it's a nice source of energy and it also puts Lewis in a slightly different, uh, you know, place when you're considering coming. And while there is this really interesting art piece, there is a part of the, of the tourist community that, that does take that into consideration. We've got, you know, we've got followings of hundreds and hundreds of people and one on website and thousands through, uh, the Instagram, but that's all you can, I can't. I don't know about that stuff myself. I'm just saying, I see big numbers. It's like Donald Trump, but, uh, but I think that, um, I think it's good for Lewis and I think that there's some fun energy amongst people in town, not necessarily the people that, um, uh, you know, are, are as mainstream, but maybe they are. And, uh, so anyway, I think it's a really good idea to continue this project. I mean, we're always a year behind. So this is what we were doing when we pitched last April and, um, you know, and I think that we're, we'll raise most of the money ourselves like we do last time and, um, and Louis gets, uh, some good credit.
Thank you, Cliff. Very interesting proposal. Uh, are there comments from the table? I've got some comments in the chat, which I'll share.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Diver, uh, is this, uh, would this just be one of these pieces of sculpture that would be installed here in the city or is it two?
Uh, this is one piece. We're getting the bottom piece. And if you go to the website, um, I don't know how to bring it up, but I, I think I sent you a really nice copy of detail that what of a close-up of this thing.
Right.
Did you get?
I was just, uh.
We got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, I just wanted to make sure I had that clear on my mind because the, this cut sheet describes two pieces and I wasn't sure. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I'm sorry?
Uh, the four on top are from one piece and the bottom piece is different. You can see the two locations are different.
Right. I, I, yes, yes. Okay. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, where are you proposed, proposing that this would be installed?
Um, well, I think I sent a map with a Google point. It basically goes, and I've talked to the state, I've talked to the, um, it goes in Canalfront Park. It goes down over by the overfalls in that area with the tall grass, which is actually a drainage area. It, um, it's going to be near there and it is, um, so it's sort of out front, down closer to the water. Uh, it's where we were going to put the tower last year. So everybody else is familiar with that location.
Right. I remember that location.
And so that, yeah, so that's where it's going and it is temporary, which we think is really important. And, um, I feel like, um, it'll, it will be seen there and, and it'll be, I mean, I think it'll be really beautiful when it rains on it and it's shiny. I think it'll be fun to watch the environment interact with it, but there you go. You see that? It's in that one, it's in that square. I think the really well groomed square is the overfalls and then the square next to it is probably the city, but, uh.
Actually, uh, the closest piece to the overfalls is, it was what belongs to the overfalls where the rain garden is what part of the city parallel with the, with the playground.
Yeah. Well, you, yeah. So it's going to be right in there and, um, and that's really good for us because we can bring a truck right there and those things are heavy. We're, 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 we're going to try and, we're going to, we're going to try and find some, some gym or somebody to help the artist move this stuff, uh, when it comes in, um, but, um,
And this would actually be, would it be placed on a concrete pad? What is it placed on?
No, this piece, uh, the other thing was, the other one was more difficult. This is a, uh, and we, and of course, whatever we do, we put it back to wherever it was. But in this case, uh, the stones themselves will sit, and this is part of the mystery, um, it, it will sit on top of a framework underneath, which is constructed of X, of plywood. So it's not truly, I mean, if that was truly a pile of stones, it would be way too heavy and big and, and, and complicated. So, um, uh, there's a framework underneath and each stone is, um, will be tethered to the framework through a loop and a wire, wire, and, um, it's not as casual as it looks. It's a, it's, it's very specific and each, you know, and each, and each stone is labeled and it goes in a certain place and.
Ah.
But, um,
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cliff.
Cliff, Cliff, I had a couple of questions. Um, is, I can't, I can't recall if this piece is intended to be interactive, meaning, um, will children et cetera be encouraged to?
No, uh, what we will do is we will put a, uh, we're going to put, um, um, little stakes in the ground and a rope or you know, something to indicate that no, you do not go climb on it.
And okay.
And the artist knows, the artist knows that may or may happen, may or not happen, but we're going to try and discourage that. And also its location, you know, um, is, is, is also discouraged, doesn't necessarily encourage it. So we will have a ring and I will probably get, um, s- some low, like those fencing things for your dog that are like 18 inches high or 20 inches high and, and run a, a wire or a rope or something around it. I'll coordinate that with the artist.
The, the second question had to do with the artist. So could you talk us through sort of the educational component? Are there, is there a day or two that she's there to sort of?
No. There isn't. We couldn't afford that and we don't have, uh, the, I think the educational opponent, the educational component, as I was thinking about it really is that Louis, um, they have, we have a lot of smart and bright people who come up with their own ideas and, and I mean, I don't think the purpose is to go down and necessarily read, hey, here's what it is. This is what the artist said, because the thing I said, that the thing about COVID, I mean, that wasn't the artist. That was me. And I think that the thing about, um, you know, the politics and environmental justice. I mean, she's got a sense of what she makes, but the piece itself has its own story to tell. And, and when an artist makes a piece of work, uh, the piece of work, um, uh, you know, leaves the artist. And so we don't see her as being part of a, um, uh, here's what's going on. Now, we don't have a component where she's going to be teaching little children and that's not what we're trying to do. Uh, we're, we would like to have a component where everyone who has experienced in their own way and form their own opinions can come and have a dialogue with her. And, uh, maybe we could do a, maybe we could do a, uh, you know, uh, and, uh, something with a, like a table and have a discussion. But we can't do that till the fall because of COVID. So we didn't push that at all.
So Cliff, are you planning to, uh, encourage people? And this might be something you've already thought of, uh, to perhaps write an essay on what, what this artwork, uh, or art installation, uh, how it moved them or what, what it said to them?
Well, I, I mean, I can tell you the last, the, the wall that when we put up the mural.
Right.
We had like a hundred and some comments on, on the Facebook page on that. So people are going to do that, whether we encourage them or not. Um, we, we could easily have like discussion groups and have the committee come down like on a Saturday and anybody wants to come and do an open committee. I, I mean, I would love to do that. I just, I don't want to encourage people getting together at this point and you, as soon as we could, I mean, in, in a normal, in a normal world, yes, we would be doing that. But, uh, and I would definitely like to encourage as much feedback as we can. And that's why, like, we did that TV view and, and they want to come back and and so we, when we did the TV people with the mural, you know, they interviewed the people looking at it and that was, that was the best press is to hearing the people's comments. And, and that, and, and we'll get them because they, they really like that. It's the man on the street and, but as far as collecting, I, I, I didn't, I didn't think of that. It's not something we couldn't do Ted, but.
It would be interesting, uh, to, you know, you know, I, I think your, your comment about how the, the confines of the pandemic or how we're all interconnected are, are very thoughtful. And I think it would be interesting to see, you know, how the general public, you may get it on your, your chat or your, uh, Instagram or whatever, but I, I think it would be an interesting, um, little essay to, to see how, how people are moved by this.
Well, I'll tell you, I am always the, the most interesting and sometime and very often the most insightful is from about the, the eight to 10-year-olds.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
And I love sharing that stuff. So if we get it, we'll get it on the, we'll get it on the website, definitely.
Maybe something that there, you know, the library could encourage, uh, through some of their, uh, youth programs, uh, kids to go take a look at in that category, in that age bracket and, and start a dialogue.
Well, I think, no, like, like Barry Duncan, he's really into this and so is Heidi and people that talk about I, uh, stuff and we, we really could, um, we could easily set up like once a month or once a, and, and, and then have anybody send if the library wanted to send their youth group there or somebody or, or the French club or I don't care, you know, have them come down and we'll pick a time to have somebody there to, to have a discussion. I mean, that'd be easy to do.
Okay.
Do that. We're in math.
Okay. Another comments from the table.
I, I have, after, after all that discussion, I, I feel a little sheepish asking this question because it's very banal, but, um, we've had some trouble in the past, uh, with, um, with people like putting up cans and puncturing the sprinkler system down there. Is, is there any concern about that or is this?
There is no sprinkler system down there. And basically I've already walked that space with the irrigation people from the park.
Perfect.
And, you know, we went through that last year because I mean, last year's would have been a lot more complicated and, and yeah, we, I, I'm with you on that. And I've talked to uh, Mr. Isaac and, uh, and the guy that's head of the park there, Ken Kennedy. Anyway, yeah, I'll talk to anybody. I'm, you know, I'm lonely over here. It's COVID.
Okay. Thanks, Cliff. That answers my question.
Couple of comments here from Michael Safina, uh, would future pieces of art considered for Canalfront Park maintain the maritime theme consistent with the theme of the park? I think, uh, you want to comment on that? I think.
I, I would just, I would just say we, uh, the next piece we may do may not be in Canalfront Park and what we're trying to do, I mean, we, we saw some beautiful things that would have been really cool, but not right for that location. And the location is everything. So, uh, we, we've, we, we had enough interest. We could have put on the, we could have put on a real show of five or six things and sort of had a real art show in Canalfront Park. And maybe that's where we want to go do a couple of years from now, but I don't think that we pick themes when we're, uh, and, and we don't really pick art that way, looking for a theme that we want artists to represent. At this point, we could, but that's not what we do.
Okay. And we had a couple of questions, uh, both, uh, from Richard Nichols, uh, and Michael Saffina about, uh, where it was going to be. We obviously have shown that on a Google map and then, um, Michael Saffina is again asked, requested the city agreement with the overfalls foundation be consulted, uh, to ensure that it will not encroach on the overfalls least portion of the park. I think you've addressed that in your placement, but.
Yeah, we went, uh, we had a meeting with that, the group last year and we actually met on site and we've been, we've been through that and this is going to be a lot less intrusive. Uh, actually I think it's going to fit in really nicely with the overfalls. So there is more information available at, um, and I'll, I'll put it in the text is lewispublicarts.org, uh, which you can get more details. So.
Okay. Thank you, Cliff.
Welcome.
Anybody else have comments at the table? Is there a motion here?
I make a motion to, um, move forward with the, this piece is, is, um, placed in the Canalfront Park as, um, illustrated by the Google map. Is that the best way to?
I think that's a good way to describe it.
Okay.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you, Cliff.
Buddy, I want to, I want to tell you, we're going to make you proud. It's, it's your project. We'll look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you, Cliff. I'm looking forward to seeing it in place of, you know, unfortunately, the one last year never, we got delivered because of the COVID. We got COVID delivered instead of your project.
Well said.
Would have much rather had your project.
Oh, so now you're blaming that on me too. Okay.
Oh, not quite.
Goodbye, everybody.
We will let you wear that one. Okay.
Good night.
All right. Moving then, uh, onto item C four is presentation possible action of the city's issuance of event permits for events planned in 2021. Uh, Emery, uh, you and I have been participating on meetings with, in meetings with the governor, uh, every other week. Um, I think at our last meeting last Tuesday, the governor was pretty, uh, specific that, uh, he was cautious about summer, summer events and, and there are specific guidelines, uh, from the state regarding gatherings and, um, what would you like? What else would you like to bring forward about that?
Well, so, so we have received a, um, inquiry from Tim Bamforth who, um, manages a lot of the nonprofit 5Ks and, um, marathons, half marathons. Um, asking if we will be issuing, you know, when we'll start issuing permits for those events this year. Um, I, I know Janet has received inquiries about everything from, um, you know, weddings on the beach to, um, the, the St. Peter's art show. And we're, we're just looking for some direction to give people, um, you know, it, I know that some, some municipalities have allowed events that complied with the threshold that the governor's office set or required, um, you know, public health approval. Um, so I guess the question is, are we ready to start looking at that? And, and also, um, you know, we've had requests for the nut house and, and things like that as well. So I know I had said previously that I would bring it back to council before we, um, started approving anything like that.
I have a question.
Please, Jim.
Uh, you mentioned that there was some conversation, I believe, with the governor's office.
Correct.
And, um, and you suggested that there was, that those conversations were about the summertime, summer events. You described it.
What, what do you question?
What are the guidelines for the state government?
I don't have them specifically in front of me and I think they're going to be modified as, as we, as the governor begins, as you note tomorrow. Uh, the governor has lifted or raised the, uh, indoor dining capacity to 50% effective tomorrow. Okay. So the governor is looking to whenever possible, uh, change, uh, the guidelines to be more lenient. Uh, but obviously they're monitoring that very carefully to see if that creates an increase, uh, in amount of infection. Uh, so I think that's a consideration. Um, last year, uh, we did, uh, approve some small weddings on the beach. We did approve some bonfires on the beach. Um, we did not approve, uh, races, uh, five.
I remember that.
Okay. So, um, and one of the things we could do is we could, we could recommend that we could make it, uh, we could provide Anne Marie and, and Janet direction that we would follow the state guidelines.
As well. But so, but so far they, the state has not suggested that we lift the current, uh, suspensions or with the current uh, status. Is that correct?
The state has not requested that we lift anything. We have been in Louis, we have been more restrictive than the state, um, when the state was allowing event. When the state was allowing events of uh, outdoor events for up to 150, or I'm sorry, up to 250 people. We did not. Um, we recognized that our our community had, um, you know, a higher percentage of the population being over 65 and and, you know, in in being cautious and and respectful of the the demographics of our community. We chose to not have those types of events.
Right.
And Anne Marie, when when is the um, earliest race that Tim is asking to to schedule? Like, when's the?
I will unmute him and he can he can answer that. Tim, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Andrew, good to see you again.
Thank you, Coach.
The um, the first one, I believe, is Dairy Queen. Um, the DQ dash it's called, and I believe it is the third week of April. And it raises uh, funds for the fireworks, Lewis fireworks, which I I don't know is going to happen this year. But that's what, uh, that event that um, uh, the owners of Dairy Queen host for the Lewis fireworks. And I believe it's April, like 23rd, I believe.
And Tim, what is the last uh, date on which you could um, still? Well, what is your your drop dead date for from Lewis?
That we could still host the event, Rob, you mean?
Yes, thanks.
Um, well, normally I work, you know, a year, a year out, six months out. Now we're, you know, we're into what, three months? Uh, March, April, we're on, actually under three months.
So you're past it in a way?
Yeah, we're we're kind of past it. We're getting to the point where we're, we're starting to um, cancel events, you know, if if it doesn't, um, if we get inside of a month, it's probably not worth it. Um, I don't think people, people make plans, so we probably won't get the 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 crowd enough to have the event. So I would say if I, if we don't have an answer from Lewis by probably March 1st, we probably wouldn't have that event. We would just defer to 2022.
Really kind of torn because, I mean, I, I even am a past participant in the DQ dash.
Right, right.
I think several of us are.
I can tell you.
That's reason enough to have it again, if if Rob agrees to run in it.
Right. I can answer your question, um, Rob, that was brought up earlier uh, um, about Anne Marie was right on cue about the governor's guidelines. And Lewis decided uh, not to have events, uh, that exactly what happened. And Rehoboth did also, uh, Rehoboth and Lewis. And I hosted five events at Cape and Open State Park in the fall. Um, and we social distance, wore a mask, followed all the DPH guidelines and the state guidelines. And we didn't have any issues at all at the state park. We were allowed 250, but I think the I I don't think we had more than 125. I think that was the high. Um, 250 includes everyone, volunteers, Rangers, um, spectators, you know, not just runners, it includes everyone.
And that's, I'm torn because on the one side, I I I think most of your participants are are healthy. Probably most of them are young, not unlike me. But we do have to bear in mind that our median age in Lewis is 30 years old, more than the state median. And so we're more vulnerable. I don't know to the extent to which that vulnerability is exposed at an event like yours. I, but then we're also hearing about the virus variants.
Mm-hmm, correct.
In South Africa's, which is potentially not so um, amenable to protection by a vaccination. So um, I I'm not sure where I come out.
Yeah, Tim, are you, is there a minimum number of participants that you need to sort of make it like a charitable, you know, profitable as such for that that it becomes a charitable event? Or is it, if you limit your numbers, can you, can it still be a worthwhile, successful charitable event?
Uh, yeah, I I I really think it could be. Um, it depends on, you know, what the organization does as far as sponsors, because the organization would go out and 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 try to get sponsors for the event. Ashley Deal is the owner of Dairy Queen, and she would go get sponsors. So the more sponsors she gets, the the more money she makes for the fireworks and the more we could, you know, the 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 numbers. If, I guess what you're asking is if it wears the break even point, and it's probably around um, 70 or 80 participants if she was to get no sponsors.
And Tim, uh, do you recall in the past two years when you, uh, when the past years, when you've done the DQ dash, uh, what the numbers actually were for people who participated? Was it, I don't think it was, those numbers were even close to 250.
Uh, no, I believe there were 160 and 140.
Okay.
I don't have that right in front of me, Ted, but I can get that, I can get that information for you, but.
But it was well below the 250 that the governor has allowed.
I'm really thinking that um, she would get about 100 people. That that's my gut feeling is that, because a lot of what I'm doing with my, with my events in 2021 is I am offering a virtual um, component in all my events, which I think it's going to take us a while to get back to the norm. And I think that's important for people to, to have that virtual op option. So that's what I'm doing. I'm I'm offering, um, you know, like all my Rehoboth events in the summer will have a live portion and a virtual portion that people can participate in. So that will, that will make the numbers uh, drop some.
Yeah. I noticed they did that with the polar bear plunge just last weekend.
They did, and I think it was pretty successful.
I I I know somebody who did it, and he was very happy that he was very able, he chose to do it on a sunny day.
And Tim, this particular route is canal is the beach side of the canal, right? You don't, this particular route, you wouldn't be involved like downtown Lewis as such, correct?
No, no, this, the the route that we did in the past has started at Dairy Queen and has went north uh, towards the Children's Beach House and turned around and came back. Now, that was before we were allowed to go on to the new uh, trail extension. It was actually not even open. Because that would would have been 2019. So I don't think we were on that trail in April of 2019. So we have that option if uh, if the city would rather us uh, not go towards the Children's Beach House and go up Savannah Road on the shoulder, take a left and go by the um, um, go by the um, Elks Club or I'm not sure if it's the Elks Club.
American Legion.
American Legion, right. And then get on the trail. Um, the only, the only really, the only thing that does is it brings in another portion of it. It brings in um, DRBA, because I believe they would have to get us across Freeman Highway.
Right.
And and sorry, Tim, one more thing. These things typically start at what, 7:30, 8 o'clock?
Well, in the summertime, they start early at 7:30, but um, that race, I believe, started at at nine. I mean, it's pretty flexible, Andrew. It could start earlier. But in the off season, it started around nine. And then in the summertime, if I have anything in the summertime, it's usually 7:30 to try to beat the traffic in the heat.
And how long does it run, Dirk?
Um, usually, an average of about 50 minutes. Uh, usually, we're shutting the clock off in 50 minutes.
Sorry, Tim, I keep, there was a gentleman that proposed last year that had some protocols, you know, with regards to there would be no online, there would be no day of registration. There would, there would be staggered starts. Do you, do you have some of those things in place as part of this plan?
Okay, I do. And that's what, um, as of right now, that's what Heather Warren from DPH um, still recommends, even though we are getting the, the, you know, the numbers are decreasing some. We are getting the vaccine out, but she still wants me to um, keep the same setup as I had in the fall. And what that is, is uh, we social distance at the start. We have no, we have a drive by pickup the day before, so there's no hands on. Basically, there's nothing hands on, on race day for, as far as walking up to a computer and registering on, you know, an hour before, there is no computer setup. There's no packet pickup on race day. It it's strictly the day before we do a drive through. And the Lewis Library has been kind enough to let us do most of our drive throughs at the Lewis Library the day before. Um, and then I let 30 go at a time over the starting line, and we stagger the starts uh, every two minutes, I believe it was. And so 30 go, so there'll probably be in this race, there'll probably be three different starts um, with 30 going with a two minute break in between, so it spreads out. And everything is um, chip timed, so that's what we base the results on. Doesn't really matter where you start and where you finish, because your time starts when you cross the mat and it finishes when you cross the mat. So that way, we can stay safe that way. Um, the other thing with the mask is that the guidelines in the fall were that you could take your mask off after you started um, and then put it back on when you finish, but that's not the case now. Now, um, as of right now, today, uh, masks are worn through the whole event. And that's how they, that's how, what we're doing with Cape and Open Track and Field. They have to uh, wear their mask at practice the whole time. Anytime they're on campus, they wear it. And anytime we're in a, a track meet, we had one last week, all the runners had to wear masks.
Wow.
Can you just describe, hey, Kim, can can you describe just briefly? Is there, I guess the question is, is there congregating after the race? I mean, I would think in normal times, there absolutely would be, but what happens in COVID times?
In in the normal, normal, Bonnie, there is, we we do gather for post-race ceremony. However, what we did at the state park, we used Beach One parking lot, uh, which was a huge parking lot. And we coned off what I called the bubble. So in the bubble is the start and finish area. And um, when they finished, we asked them to um, keep social distance, wear your mask. And as far as the award ceremony, there really wasn't a normal award ceremony. What I did was I had the awards put on a table or several tables, because we spaced the awards out. And they were all in individual bags. And I basically just announced the names, and they came up on their own, got their award and left. So there was really no, um, you know, COVID kind of takes the social out of the whole event.
It it sure does.
Yeah, so there really wasn't a uh, a gathering at the finish line. It was, and a lot of people left. And then I delivered their awards to their mailbox if they're local, and I mailed the awards out if they're not local. So I would say about half of the, you know, half of the 100 people that showed up stayed to get their award, and they were mostly from out of state, um, that, you know, wanted to get it before they they left Lewis.
Right. Tim, you obviously have put an immense amount of time into planning and thinking through this, and I really appreciate your work.
Yeah, I think Heather Warren's tired of hearing from me.
Well, obviously, it's paid off because you've been able to have the events you did have in in the state park. And and I've probably have helped shape other events, such as the polar bear plunge.
Right. Well, she she's been great, though. No, she's been great, and she knows that um, I I uh, have, went back and forth with her and adjusted whatever she wanted. And um, she knows, she's familiar with my events, and and if I can't have them, I totally understand. Um, but she's familiar with that.
Okay, thank you.
So um, the agenda item says presentation possible action of the city's issuance of event permits for events planned for 2021. We talked about the DQ. What other ones are you seeking for from tonight, and what are those dates?
Um, so we have events, Bonnie, pretty much. That's when it starts, and we have event, we have I want to say there's nine or 10 events, I think, from there till December. Um, and a couple in the summertime, not much in the fall, I think, uh, in Lewis. The Cannon, oh, I'm sorry, the Cannonball. Lewis Historical Society has one around Labor Day. I wish I had that right in front of me. I'm sorry, I don't. Um, I'm looking for it now.
Yeah, the reason, I mean, I mean, the reason I'm asking, obviously, is um, you know, the the later, I mean, as the fourth ambulance goes by Savannah, Savannah Road, since I've been sitting here. Um, it it the the later in the, in in the year, the more people hopefully will be vaccinated and the lower the risk. So.
Right.
I I, you know, we we've talked about this, this first one on April 23rd.
Yeah, the next, I know there's a, we normally do a um, a run that goes from um, Irish Eyes. It's a half marathon, and it goes from Irish Eyes right into the state park. It goes down the trail. Um, so it's in Lewis for a short time. It starts and finishes in the city of Lewis, uh, and but the majority, 80% of it, maybe even 90% of it is uh, on the new extension of the trail and into the state park. It goes down to Gordon's Pond and back, and that's Mother's Day weekend. That's usually Mother's Day weekend. It's on, usually on that Saturday. So, so that's another event in May. And then the the Masser, Lee Masser Five Miler is Memorial Day weekend. And that's a, we've had that since uh, about 1993. And that's normally around Memorial Day, Sunday. So just to give you an example of a couple that are coming up.
I I guess I have unmuted Janet. She's received a number of inquiries as well. And I know I've had um, discussion with Betsy about the the British Car Show. Um, so you know, that one is is coming up as well. I can.
Comes up the first weekend in May.
Right, so um, Janet, do you want to talk a little bit about the events that you've gotten?
Sure, um, I'd be happy to. Thank you. We've, I've received um, a lot of many communications regarding events in the city. They've included races, weddings, um, events in the parks, and I've held off on many of them just because I didn't know what we were going to be doing um, as far as permitting events in the parks and in within the city. But I've had um, quite a few requests and um, they've, they've included um, weddings, races, parades. So I just, I need some direction on what will be allowed for those events.
Right. If if we're looking at early in the season, another, another one, I know that that Janet got the request for was the um, Little League Parade Opening Day.
Um, for Saturday in May.
Right.
That was for April 17th.
Oh, is it that early? Okay, I thought it was for Saturday.
Um, and and like I said, the the British.
There's also the Memorial Day, but I think, you know, there's also the Memorial Day Parade that was organized a few years ago. I would imagine that the American Legion will want to do that again.
I mean, I I have a few, just a few comments in terms of just, when we considering these things. I mean, Rob has addressed the fact that that we are starting to see vaccinations. Now, the variant, of course, plays to that, but the 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 reality is, you know, come April, hopefully, the large majority of the at-risk population will have ha had some vaccinations. Two is things like the Little League, for example, children are already going to school. They're, they are spending time around one another masked. So if they're met, meeting guidelines, that's something to consider. There there's, there's normalcy there with kids taking the bus, kids spending time in a classroom. If we want to make special considerations for, you know, what groups are involved and that what their tolerant risk is, is I think Bonnie had a good suggestion. Bonnie had a good suggestion around following, or maybe it was Ted, following the the governor's guidelines. Um, but I think when things like races, like where they're outdoor activities, I don't know how. How clear is the guidance on those kinds of things around athletic events like that?
Well, I think Tim.
Go ahead.
Tim's got to talk to us about that, groups no more than two fifty and.
So it's pretty, I mean, it's, it, there is some definition around that.
And and he's got the masking and all that.
Yeah, so I. I don't know, we want to make a mode, we we were looking to make a motion here, but I'm with Rob, I think as best we can try and. Return to some normalcy and gives uh, in a safe way, I'm 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 inclined to. Try and, try and work towards that um, by maybe cherry picking some events or. Or pu- putting guidelines in place for ourselves that we feel comfortable with these events. Uh, or if it's a case where, I mean, again, the good question to Tim was like the drop dead date, you know, are there. Lead times or these, some of these events may need to come. For discuss, you know, for our approval as we get to them, or what's the lead time on some of these?
Well, we can reissue permits that are revocable, uh, if the circumstances indicate. There's a health risk.
Yes, and 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 the other thing is any, any permit we issue would be. Um, once we've gotten a sign off from public health, so we're we're not. Uh, you know, the the minimum is going to be the, the state and. So the state at at one point and and around the holidays, again, they they rolled it back and got more strict and I expect that um. As things are leveling out, um, they'll, they'll start opening up again, but at one point, they were saying that. Any event over two hundred fifty people needed public health approval. But they also said that if we as a municipality wanted to. Have a lower threshold for that, they would review any event we referred to them, so. Um, you know, we're we're not going to go out of, out of line with whatever the state is looking at. Um, it's just that, you know, for the last year, we've been more restrictive, so do we want to, you know. Open it up to the degree that we're in line with the the public health guidance.
I have a question, Anne Marie, uh, how, what amount of time that does the state health board require? To review a um, I get, they're not reviewing a permit, but what would they be reviewing?
Well, in some cases, and and Tim can probably um. Give more detail on this than I can because he's, he's had events reviewed, but, I mean, they're going to look at the event layout. Um, they're, they're going to um, you know, look at the, the number of people you have, make sure you have. Um, protocol, it, you know, it's the protocols that you put in place um.
Right.
For for masks, for hand sanitizing and all of those things, I don't know, Tim, is there? Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, there, there's actually um, Heather Warren basically told me, uh, Tim, she said um. I need your plan, um, uh, come up with a plan, send it to me and let me review it. So I did my homework, sent it to her, it went back and forth three or four times, you know, I had one hand, it's hand sanitizer station. She wanted three, I had um, forty people going across the line, she said, can we do thirty? You know, it, that's kind of how the dialogue went back and forth and then um, also I wanted to add that. Uh, when I was at the state park in the fall for my four or five events. Pat Cooper and I decided that it would be best maybe to lower that two fifty to two hundred. And he felt more comfortable with two hundred and I was okay with that and we didn't even come close to it anyway, but. That was some dialogue I had with the state park and Lewis, you mu- I mean, the the city of Lewis may decide. Okay, we're going to give this a try and try to get back to some normalcy, but um, we're going to lower it to one fifty or we're, you know. That might be a decision you you guys make, but that is something that is. Would be up to you and then I would, I would send that plan to Heather Warren and say. Okay, I have an event that has been approved through the city um, for a hundred and seventy-five people or a hundred and fifty people. And then she would review it, look at the course and basically it's the same plan. Uh, I'm I'm not going to change anything, it it worked, so I'm going to send her the same.
My, I guess my question, Tim, was directed to, how long does it take uh? Uh, the state to make that review, review the plans and negotiate what they need.
So when I sent Heather the plan on a Monday morning, uh, by Wednesday, by Wednesday. It was uh, reviewed and I had approval.
Okay.
So it's pretty quick.
That was good, okay, thank you very much.
Knowing that. She, she knows my plan already and I talked to her not only. With this hat on, but I'm also, I also uh, run the Cape and Open Track and Field Program. And that's a whole different animal of going to meets and where we can go, where we can't go, so I'm dealing with her on that also, so. She hears from me probably more than she wants to.
Well, let me direct this next question to um, probably to Anne Marie. Uh, Anne Marie, would uh, would someone who's applying for a permit to have a wedding? Would they be expected to go through the same kind of review process with that uh, Heather person?
So a, a private event does not have the same level of review, but again, I I believe that the. The Division of Public Health um, is there as a resource, so. You know, if, if as we start to get some of these requests, we want to. You know, coordinate with them so that we can put the proper conditions on events. I'm, I'm confident that they will provide that assistance.
Okay, but the app, the person who would actually be applying for the permit would not have to uh, interface with with the state.
I don't believe so.
Okay, just public events.
Rob made an interesting point, and that is, we we could issue uh, permits also with a revocability clause.
Right.
Right.
And should the conditions change, and I think that, you know, that would give us an opportunity to. I think what Anne Marie's actually got here is a request for overall, how do we want to deal with events, not.
Right.
Tim's events alone or just a wedding or something like that, we're looking at a. So something, Janet, an opportunity, and Tim, an opportunity to go forth with a strategy of how they're going to run the season.
And Ted, I wanted to add, um, Heather made that very clear to me, that if things change, if numbers go up. Um, she, you know, she will shut down the event, she made that very clear.
Could we hear, because I I mean, I think one of the issues here is that, in this, I think this is what Tim's line of questioning is illustrating is. What, what, Tim, Tim, the councilperson, um, what, then, what Tim Bamforth is bringing up is. Is that his events are are highly structured and supervised.
Right.
But I I'd kind of like to hear from Tom Spell because. You know, let, let's face it, our ability to enforce these conditions. Um, I I think is is something we have to hear from Tom about because if what we're talking about here is saying, okay. To Janet, go ahead and approve weddings and blah, 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 and and we'll, we'll put. We'll, we'll say that they have to comply with the the state standards or whatever we do. There's still a real question as to whether or not we can realistically enforce any of that, so I, Tom, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Do you have anything to add here?
He's here.
I, I would just say, uh, you know, there would have to be some coordination between Janet and I. I do believe like the race that Tim described as far as the DQ dash is definitely. Uh, doable with the plan, uh, you know, that's been vetted at different levels in place. It's the individual smaller ones that maybe, you know, not a professional plan like Tim has developed. Would be a little more problematic and I, we'd try to look at them on a case by case basis, but. You know, most of those probably wouldn't involve the police. So the opportunity to enforce would be less as well, so I think we'd have to just look at them individually.
I think the wed- the weddings was a good example of, they, obviously people need lead time for for that.
Yeah.
Those are ones where also if there are dates in place, you might want to e- either consider or kill it because. The 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 bride and groom need to come up with a plan or if not.
I am big, yeah.
Most, most event and and many, any beach wedding, I think, pretty much has a wedding planner involved. So if we come up with a policy, I think it's important that we, Janet, be, you know, that those wedding planners or event planners that are known to us. We should communicate that to them, so they have some idea of what they need to bring to us, what they need to bring to Janet in order to seek a permit.
Yeah, I mean, ordinarily, I, you'd say, well. The the risk is really to the wedding party in that, if we're talking about wedding, right, but the problem is, it's, it's not true. Because the wedding party, you know, they're going to go into the stores and they're going to do this, they, you know, they're going to circulate within. You know, within the town and that's, that's where we get to, I think, Rob's point about having a more. You know, a more vulnerable population and, you know, wait, when we have a, you know, a. A a big chunk of our population vac- vaccinated, who knows, I mean, I know people are trying very, very hard to get. Their, their, uh, right, at this point, basically their second chance for most people, but. But that, right now, that's only people sixty-five and over, so um, you know, I mean, there's encouraging news out there about. Additional dosages and additional vaccines coming online, I guess, I I don't know whether we want to. And there's going to be an element of arbitrary to the arbitrariness to this, no matter what we do, but do we want to say, all right? You know, for something like Tim's uh, very carefully vetted types, you know, categories of events. We feel pretty comfortable about it for these, the events that are hard to monitor. Uh, we're going to wait until, you know, May or fifteenth or, you know, some. Some date chosen that seems to be a reasonable guess about when most of our population will have some protection, I mean. I, it's, it's, it's not Tim's events that I'm actually particularly worried about, um, ironically, since they're the, probably the larger events. It's the weddings and the bonfires and the, you know, all these little events that realistically, as Tom said, that the police. Hopefully won't be involved, you know, you don't, you don't want them to crash away, away. It it's those that worry me more and I don't know if those should be assigned as of X date, we'll, we'll allow them or or what.
I think it's a moving target, Bonnie, and what, what did we, remind me, Janet, what did we do with bonfires last year, but did we allow them up to a certain?
So, what we did last year was. Through the season when the beaches were still open and we had that um, situation where the beaches were closed. Because of the um, oil spill, so we didn't allow anything there. Um, but what we did before that was we allowed. The bonfires, we allowed weddings, um, I think that. With the governor's stay-at-home advisory. What we have done since then, since that advisory, is we have just suspended everything. And I think that. Because of that advisory, um, we, we have not allowed. Anything on the beach, um, because we did not want to endorse. People coming to the beach with the stay-at-home advisory, um, so I think that. If the advisory is lifted, then we can. Probably discuss what we can do for weddings and bonfires and whatnot. But I think that we need to be cautious about. What we permit, given the governor's advisory.
So could we, could we approve something that would be subject to the governor's advisory, uh, that, uh, you know. And 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 that, and then yet recognize, as Bonnie has suggested, that. Events that are, that are sanctioned by Tim, by uh, DPH uh. Could uh, of the, you know, the events like races and things like that. Uh, could go forward as long as they have been sanctioned through the DPH.
I, I think that that would be advisable.
Ted, can I ask one question?
Please.
I ju- this might be a dumb question, but on private events, uh, do they, they still have to, I assume. Wear a mask and social distance, even a private event because it's in town of Lewis.
Yep, right.
Okay, thank you.
There's no exception to that, that, and in with, with President Biden's directory of ask, you know, asking people or mandating people to wear a mask for. You know, foreseeable future, I don't think we're going to back off on that.
Right, right.
And I think the big difference is for a, a run event, for a parade. You know, for those types of things, there are police that are assigned to work these events, so. You know, there, there is some presence there to to ensure that the, the rules and the, the conditions are being followed. When you issue a, a, um, a permit to do a wedding on the beach. We don't send police to that and and again, I don't know that you want to get in the, the habit of sending police to that, but. You know, if they say they're going to have thirty people and they're going to be masked, um. You know, there's nobody there to make sure that's what happened.
You just assume that they do have thirty and if two hundred show up, then. Then you send Mr. Spell.
I mean.
Well, there's another issue here.
Often the weddings on the beach are really, um, the couple and their immediate family. They exchange the vows and then they have a, a party somewhere else.
That's very much what I was going to say, if we, if we make this, if we make this too tight, um, we're going, there'll be people that will just do it regardless. And won't even seek a permit. And so I think, you know, you can, you can ratchet it down to where people just ignore you, uh, and I think we, we're better off to be. Uh, you know, opening some kind of a window here, uh, that with parameters, I mean. The governor has been pretty direct about encouraging people to stay home, certainly he's been a very strong advocate of mask wearing and social distancing. And all of those things, um, and I understand our population, believe me, I'm a member of that population. Uh, so I think we just have to try to strike that balance.
One more question and it might be real self-evident, but um. As far as the stay-at-home advisories, these kinds of orders that come from uh, the governor's office. There's no rhyme or reason to them being issued, is there? So in other words, they don't do it every Tuesday or. You know, every two weeks, it could be at any time, is that correct?
It can be any time, but generally they, the governor issues his contingence, continuance of the state of emergency. Of around the consistent, on a monthly, he has to do it on a monthly basis, he can only extend it thirty days at a time. So, uh, actually, you know, it's usually happens around the middle of.
I see, okay.
Uh, because his first invocation of the, of the state of emergency occurred in the middle of March.
Right, so it's just like a continued sense that.
It's a thirty-day continuum.
Right, thank you.
What I'd kind of like to, to suggest is, it seems to me we're coalescing around two things, maybe I'm wrong, but. The, the first is that if it's a, if it's a state sanctioned event. That's good enough for us, I mean, that's, I guess that's my, this is just Bonnie talking, but that, that sounds like a reasonable. Science-based health decision. On the other, the, the sort of other category of non-state sanctioned events, I mean. What, what Fauci is saying is that um, that that it may be that by April. Vaccines are available for anybody who wants them, now that may be because they're not getting the pickup rate they want, but. What about if we chose something like April fifteenth? You know, that, that unless conditions change, we'll allow. Events that, that where people, you know, say that they'll provoke, they'll, they'll uh, uh. events that that where people, you know, say that they'll provoke, they'll they'll uh, abide ever, well, whatever the state standards are at the time, um, that will let that happen. I mean, and I chose April fifteenth, just it's completely arbitrary. I think April first is too soon. I think May, well, maybe it's not completely arbitrary. I think April first is too soon. I think May first maybe too late. Um, if it's April fifteenth, we're probably before prime wedding season. What do you think? I mean, that was kind of where I was coming down on this.
I like that idea. When's our, when's our April, when's our April mayor and council uh, meeting?
April twelve.
So I, Bonnie, I think that's a great, great day.
April twelfth, yeah. Why don't we do it to April twelfth? And then we can bring it, reevaluate it.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, I think Janet may need a little more
Right.
friends than that. Um, if people are calling her and saying, I wanna do something on.
Exactly. What I'm saying is that, you know, some, some, you know, I think we could tell her to go, go ahead, you know, it, you're, the April fifteenth is the middle of the week, so if you did it, you know.
It's memorable day.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, Bonnie, is your idea that we would instruct Janet to continue to put people in queue, she would continue to accept requests, applications for permits? And then a decision would be made on or around the fifteenth of April, is that what you're suggesting?
No, actually, I I was doing it a little differently. Um, and thanks for asking the question, because it's an important clarification. What I was thinking is, we choose, any date we choose is gonna be arbitrary. We can make, you know, as as good a choice as we can make. But what I was thinking is, we would, we would say to to Janet, um, go ahead and issue things, issue permits for after April blank or May blank, whatever we come up with. Uh, and but but, you know, with the, you know, with the proviso that you gotta, you gotta say you're, we say you're going to abide by the state rules, and if things change, you, this may be revoked. There's nothing we can do about that. That's a health issue. Um, but that she go ahead and start issuing them, and um, you know, then whether it's you know, that if something changes, if they're, if if, you know, if the UK variant or the South African variant, or whatever the next variant turns out to be, it means that we're all confined to quarters again. Um, then we say, sorry, but no can do, and we cancel them. That was kind of what I was thinking.
I see.
Is that a motion?
I I I defy Janine to say what that motion was. I mean, I can try, I I was actually, I was actually seeing if anybody thought that was a good idea, if.
I like that idea.
I like, yeah, I think, keep in mind, Easter is the, you're you're just beyond Easter with that, which is fine.
Well, I think that's actually good.
Uh, yeah, I mean, so what I'm saying is, you're, if you do it, uh, Easter's the fourth, uh, so if you do it, uh, you know, you can, so if somebody wanted to have a wedding the weekend after Easter, the tenth of, which is the tenth, eleventh, uh, maybe that's a good date to to work with.
So if I, if I, if I can just, and I'm I'm working off um, the my memory here, um, there, there is something on April, I think, second, which is Good Friday.
Yep.
And there is another event, and I will say it's a parade on April eleventh, which is, um,
A Saturday.
Yep, and that's correct. That's the Little League. So those two would come before the date that you're um, discussing as the cutoff. So I would just put those two events out there. Um, and and that's for for your decision, but there there are things that are out there right now.
What's the end of the second debate board?
What's on Good Friday?
Yeah.
So on Good Friday, um, it's the um, Methodist Church.
Oh, right.
And they have done their, what they call a crosswalk um, through the city, and they go to various churches and they carry a cross. It's um, an Easter celebration. Um, they've done it for many years, is my understanding. Um, and there's a new pastor for that church, so he has called this week and asked for that um, as a possibility.
It's Bethel.
Yes.
So if we lifted it, if we moved it rather than April fifteenth to April first, I would think that that group in particular would be very cautious.
Well, that that group and the Little League, who's
Yeah, but I
Yeah, whose parade is on the seventeenth. They've requested that for the seventeenth.
Well, how about if we just allow those two events, and then for the weddings and the bonfires and all the, you know, meat and potatoes kind of stuff, we we make it, I don't know. You you could, you could make it the the
If you make it the fifteenth, the Little League's exempt if she, if she's correct with her seventeen. I think the Little League thing should happen if we can possibly figure out a way.
So the 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 crosswalk, though, I still think we should make sure that public health is good with it.
Of course.
So just, no. Well, doesn't that fall into the the, into the Tim Banford kind of category then? Right, so so if if it's, if it's okay, if it's been okayed by public health, then I think, I think we're okay with it. So that would take care of the presumably the Little League, I mean, I don't know, but presumably both of these things.
Yeah, I think, Bonnie, I think both of them would have to submit a plan now to
Right, they would have to be formed, they have to comply.
Exactly, exactly. So so if the state says yes, then Louis says yes.
Okay, right. So are we at April first, or we, where are we, April first or April fifteenth?
I think April first is too soon, Ted.
Well, I think I I heard April fifteenth with the exception of two events.
Well, there's only one.
There's only one, yeah.
Right, it's only one, right.
Yeah, so.
I thought it was two. Oh, I thought someone said the eleventh, I apologize. Yeah, she did.
Sunday.
It makes sense, the seventeenth is a Saturday.
Yeah, right.
It's a Saturday event.
Um.
Okay, so if we did it on the April fifteenth, I think we'd be okay, with the exception of the of the crosswalk, assuming they get a DPH approval.
Right, okay, so I'll I'll try to articulate that into a motion.
Right.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve any uh, publicly uh, BPH uh, approved uh, events. For private events, we'll um, allow after April fifteenth, assuming uh, conditions don't change. That, about right, or?
I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Worsen, if
Worsen.
Everybody's conditions don't worsen, because we do want them to change.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that's a good point, Emery.
Sorry, Emery.
I I'll, I'll, I'll second that. It, I think, I think that's sufficient. Janet, is that sufficiently clear for you?
Um, I'm not sure, sure it is. But, um, yeah, uh, if if somebody can rephrase that for me.
So essentially, you're gonna, you're gonna, any event that comes in after the fifteenth of April, or that's gonna happen after the fifteenth of April, can go ahead.
Is okay, okay.
As long as they meet the guidelines, I mean, that was
Right, it has to comply, right.
And the, the two events prior to the fifteenth of April.
I think we determined it's only one.
Okay, and that, and that's okay.
That has to get a BPH approval.
Right, okay. The crosswalk can go forward with DP, if it has DPH approval.
Right.
Beyond that, we're waiting until April fifteenth.
Right, and Janet, you may have to modify the permit form to have a line saying, you know, it is understood that this permit is dependent upon the applicant's agreement to comply by
And and that has
And it's, it could be revocated, too.
Yes, exactly, Jim.
Bonnie, that that um, has been in there
Beautiful.
The beginning of COVID, that, you know, you have to apply, but you're, you have to abide by all of the um, governor's recommendations. So that has been in there.
Oh, you're way ahead of us then.
Yeah.
Well, I think that that was pre my, uh,
Oh, Janet, just take credit.
I can't, I can't. That that was pre me, so.
So wait, if you have a motion in a second, is there any more serious discussion about this? Janet, do you have enough information to go forward with we, if we adopt this emotion?
I think I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. And he opposed. Okay, so the motion carries. Janet, I think you've got your direction.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much, guys.
And thank you for all the clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Work.
No, I just wanted to add one thing, you know, that's really good that you have that in there, that they have to abide by the state guidelines, because there's been a few situations in the fall where organizers just thought that just because I have, you know, I have Louis' approval, and then they went with it. And then all of a sudden, the state said, wait, no, you need my approval, too. So just because they have Louis' approval, doesn't mean that they can go ahead with the event.
Right.
And a lot of organizers, a lot of organizers were unclear on that.
Tim, before you go, I just wanna make uh, make you feel old. I just wanna point out that Tim Banforth was my track coach in in uh, high school.
Yeah, you, you're making me feel old. That's what you're making me feel.
Okay, let's move on.
See you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah.
Uh, Island C five is presentation discussion of the city's code enforcement program. Emery?
I I've brought Robin onto the panel, so.
Hey, Robin, you wanna talk to us about this?
Well, first of all, I need to apologize if if I freeze up all night long. I've been sitting here and uh, my internet keeps saying it's unsecure, so I'm I'm hoping for the best, but we'll see what happens. Um, actually, uh, I didn't prepare any type of actual presentation for this discussion when Emery talked to me and said that uh, it was going to be on the agenda. Uh, wasn't quite sure if the council was looking at some sort of generalized uh, discussion on our code program, or if we were looking at specific areas that needed to be talked about. So it was kind of, I can do it either way, but I I don't know, it's nine twenty-one. I didn't know exactly if there was any particular areas that we were trying to focus on.
Robin, if I can jump in, I I'm just one voice, but my own interest would be in, in this meeting, having you introduce us to what your process is for detecting and remedying violations.
If if you, uh, I'd say from the code enforcement, and if you're looking uh, at um, our code enforcement officer, he 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 basically patrols the city. Uh, he's out and about probably eighty five, ninety percent of the time. Um, anything that comes to his attention, uh, whether it's um, property maintenance issues, which is, say, like grass cuttings, uh, trash, uh, unkept properties, um, unauthorized signage. Uh, he's will pull over, and if there's jobs going on, uh, check for business license, uh, check for permitting, and and items like that. Um, if you're looking from that portion of the code enforcement end.
Uh, he finds one, let's say it's, it's a a permit violation, what does he do?
He actually, at the time, what he has to do right now is, uh, we don't have the capabilities of ha- having a, in our, of the admin system in the vehicles with Steve at the time. So what he has to do, he has to drive back to City Hall. Um, that's, that's being worked on, that's another issue. Um, and what he'll do is, he'll check, he'll check and see if it has a permit, and then he'll check and see if there's, if the contractors there on the job have a license or not. If if they don't, what he does is goes back out to the job sites, and normally, it'll, it'll it's, the jobs are not shut down, but we'll inform the contractor that either a license is needed or a permit is needed, and at that time, they'll come in and get get and correct that issue.
Now, is he the one who, let's say you issue a, a building permit for a new house? Is he the one who makes sure it's not built to forty-five feet rather than thirty-four feet?
You usually, that's not something that the code enforcement officer does. That's, that's either something that normally, the majority of the permits are reviewed and the inspections are done by Henry, is the assistant building official. Um, Steve is primarily for code enforcement, like property maintenance issues. Henry and myself are 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 lean towards more of the the building end of things, and the majority of it's Henry.
The the terminology you can help me with, because the building permits are issued pursuant to code, too. So I'm not sure how you separate code enforcement from code enforcement.
Nor- normally, again, it's, it's, it all lumps together, but our, our, the the requirements that we, you need to fill the code enforcement official's position are less than what it is to be building official or assistant building official. The certifications to review plans, to do inspections, are not there into the code enforcement issue as far as buildings.
And zoning code violations, is that also a building official function?
Normally, yes, but Steve will, Steve will look at those, too, but normally, that's something in a use issue or things like that, setback requirements, or or initiated through the building department.
Okay, and then, uh, does Henry go out and check the buildings that he's permitted to see, to make sure they're being built in according to the permit?
Yes, we do periodic inspections, and we do, uh, on a new house, just in general, we have five um, inspections that are, um, or four, excuse me, uh, footer inspection, a framing inspection, an energy inspection, and a final inspection. So during the whole process, that is done, and 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 items in the floodplain, there's, after they build the the foundation walls, and they put the floor, first floor on, there's another inspection that's required to ensure the height of that first floor is gonna meet the the floodplain regulations.
Okay.
But then there's also two other inspection, three, at least two other inspections that you have to have, which would be a plumbing and a wiring inspection. Those are done by county, correct?
Well, well.
By separate contractors.
Correct, yeah, the 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 plumbing inspections are handled through the Board of Public Works, but they, that they pilot the outside contractor for that. The electrical inspections are done by an independent contractor and an individual, independent company that inspects them. During that, before we'll do a framing inspection to verify that things are being done as supposed to, we require that a rough-in plumbing and a rough-in electrical inspections have been done and approved first, and that's the same at the final. So all those checks and balances are kind of in place to make sure all those inspections are taken care of before we'll do our either framing or fire.
But aren't you also then, uh, because Rob asked a question about elevation, about height? Aren't you also requiring uh, some kind of a, an elevation certificate in terms of, not elevation for the floodplain, but the height of the building, to make sure that it's within the thirty-one and a half feet, or the thirty-six feet, or the forty feet, if it's a commercial building?
Yes, on the final, on the final survey, we require a final survey prior to us doing a final inspection, and that's an as-built survey. So everything on the property has to be located by the surveyor, um, noted on there as far as dimensions, and we also require um, survey to put the height uh, of the building from the center line of the road is required by the code. So it's noted on the survey, so we can verify that that is under the the either the thirty and a half feet or thirty-four feet in the floodplain.
Right, thank you.
So Robin, is is you're saying an as-built survey showing all of the improvements, including the height of the building, and and if it's in the floodplain and elevation certificate, all are presented prior to a certificate of occupancy?
Correct, and 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 we really like to get all that information, especially the elevation certificate information, before we even go out and do a final inspection. That way, we can verify that if there's any issues with uh, say, equipment not to the required heights by the flood ordinance. Um, so that way, we can check that before we even set set up an inspection. But at times, they'll bring that information with them, and again, if it does not meet the requirements of our floodplain ordinance, they will not get a final inspection.
So let's go into another slight So let's go in another slightly different direction. When you have problems and you see them by various contractors and they're repeated by the same contractor, are you keeping a track of contractors who may be in violation on multiple occasions?
Yes, we don't. We don't actually have any type of spreadsheet that we do. We do note that in our inspections forms that we have. If we're if we're having a repeat offender, a lot of times we have occasionally due to other issues with contractors revoked business license from the contractors.
And Robin, when, to what extent do you depend on citizens to point out violations?
Usually, it happens quite often, which is a good thing because, again, Steve does a really, really great job of of trying to patrol as much as he can. But it's limited, especially he finds more on Mondays or Tuesdays for the weekend people. We can't, we get a lot of those homeowners that maybe come down for the weekend, decide their maybe redo their steps or you know, do some minor repairs to the house that, again, usually is not told Steve comes in on Monday. And then then we basically follow up and there's there are occasions that we'll have to have them correct the problems. And it's the most notable one is the example that I use for Mr. Nepa, you know, him doing his project. And now we're at the standstill where we're at.
Right. And.
Robin, do you? Oh, go ahead, Rob.
Well, go ahead, Tim.
Real quick question. Two questions, actually. Does your inspector ever do just drop in inspections where they're not scheduled? You know, they're not in response to a contractor calling and saying, okay, I'm ready for my framing inspection. And and the inspector just drops in to see how a project is progressing and.
Like I said, a lot, like I said, not probably as much going in the building. But again, Steve will drive around, again, around towns. Henry is out doing other inspections. Steve is probably more of the person that if he notices something out of place, he'll stop or he'll follow back up with myself or Henry. But as far as time wise, it's very limited if just to go through certain properties in this and actually walk inside the building.
I see. And do I understand correctly that you describe Henry as the individual in the office approving the plans? And but then he also has the responsibility of going to the field to the construction site and approving what he's also approved on paper. Is that correct?
That is correct. Henry does the majority of them, yes. Now, Steve, at times, on some of the smaller, say, like energy inspections, or when need be for some of the smaller jobs, Steve will fill in.
I see. And is, how much time in a week does Henry spend out in the field doing inspections? Compared to inside the office doing plan review? Code review?
It varies because, you know, again, how the projects move along, some sometimes. He's probably, Henry's probably doing two or three inspections a day, so he's spending probably more time in the office. But it could be four or five during the day. I mean, right right now, he just, he told me this tonight before I left the office that he already had two inspections scheduled for tomorrow. So a-again, it varies from, it's according to how the cycles go with permits, basically.
Sure, of course. Sorry about that, Rob.
We're in a real busy period right now with construction or about to become with some of the major projects that are coming through. And is do you have the adequate resources to keep up? I know we've got a school coming out of the working on and we're talking about Dutchman's Harvest and other things like that. How did I know we've got some budget concern issues coming up with hiring a part-time building official? You want to comment on how pushed is your staff?
Well, we added another building official position and we've put Steve in that position. And we're getting ready to hire a code enforcement. So we will have once we fill out enforcement, we will have the staffing we need. Do you? Do you want to add anything to that, Robin?
No, again, right now, Steve has moved up to the assistant building officials position, but with lack of having a code enforcement officer, then Steve is still responsible for those duties and that's his main duty still as a code enforcement. But he has taken on a lot more of the the building officials duties as far as helping out for inspections. And again, and that's more of the 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 energy type inspections and minor inspections.
David, Emery, didn't you? I'm sorry, Rob, you go ahead. Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, this time I'll plunge ahead. Robin, in response to one of the mayor's questions, you said you don't, that was about when you find a contractor who's not in compliance. You said you don't keep a spreadsheet. Do you keep a log of any kind of what you find in the field that's not compliant?
Yes, we in our admin software system, we have capabilities with inspections and things like that under the the permit section. There's a code violation section and also in the admin software system. We do not utilize that like we should. I need to start, we need to start working that, get trained on that section of the software system.
Will that also enable you to log what citizens tell you?
Yes, I think so. If I'm not mistaken, the complaints can be logged in on that system.
And and will it also enable you to track your follow-up on these violations and complaints?
Yes, as far as I'm as far as I'm aware of, yes, it will. Yes.
But you haven't yet been trained in it, so it's not yet operational in that way.
No, no, that's that's one thing on the list.
Now, Steve doesn't work, you know, he works a five hour, a five-day week. He's not a twenty-four by seven on the job. So what happens on the weekend?
Normally, normally, the it all basically, at that point, if somebody says a complaint and it turns over to the police department. And then the police department will follow up on something. And then they'll Chief Spel's been pretty good about, or his officers, to send us a report on if if something is noticed and has brought to our attention.
Okay. And kind of last question, if somebody comes to you with and says that, well, Rob Morgan has this accessory building and he's using it as sleeping quarters for his cousin. What do you do about that?
We we will go, we'll go follow up on on the complaint and the concern. A lot of times in that case, we, there is, as everybody's probably aware, some of these type units that you're just that you've described have been in place for ever. So it's it's basically, I think, been the policy of the city is a past that no, nothing has been done to remove that type of use.
And but that's, you say it's the policy. I've never heard of that policy. I think that basically that's a staff policy, not a council policy. So isn't that the kind of thing that you ought to ask? You have to bring to the council's attention, we've got a pattern of this. How should we deal with it?
I I think it's somewhat, if I'm not mistaken, it's been addressed somewhat. As we've, usually I have, again, a weekly meeting between our the staff members, the building staff. This was something I think that's been brought up and Henry's brought to my attention that this has been something I think that the mayor and council has somewhat discussed in reference to are we going to start allowing those things because we have so many of them that are, say, non-compliant? And maybe I'm wrong in stating that, but I think this type of issue has been addressed.
Well, it may have been addressed, but I think only Ted would remember it because well, maybe Bonnie, but it certainly hasn't been brought up in my in my seven years.
And that's the same way with me, councilman. You know, again, I've only been here seven years myself, so.
It actually came up in both the in the comp plan discussion.
It did come up, the comp plan discussion.
Well.
And how was it resolved?
It was not approved.
Well, I think I think there's probably something in there, but the 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 general issue came up. I mean, I think what Robin is describing is things that have been going on for a very long period of time. And I'd turn it around to say, I'm not aware of any direction from the city to the building officials' office to crack down on long-term existing non-conformance. I mean, if that's if that's where we're going, then that's a conversation to have. But the way it came up in the in the comp plan discussion was sort of, there's sort of a, there's sort of a cluster of discussion of types of auxiliary uses, you know, did we want to have granny flats? Did we want to create more affordable or workforce housing by allowing units over garages? You know, did we think that this was a better way to have additional living, living space because they're existing buildings and therefore maybe you don't want you, you wouldn't end up with additional. In fact, that was also showed up more recently in, I've forgotten how it was phrased, but it was what was one of the LPC action item things that that we talked about on on Monday. So I think I suspect that's what Rob is talking about, but I mean, Rob, if where you're going with this is is that there's there's some kind of issue in the city that we need to talk about, then I think the more productive way is to bring it up and say, okay, council, we want a list of of non-conforming uses. If I'm just using that as an example, where, you know, auxiliary buildings are being used for living space, you know, ask the building officials' office for a list of them and then make a decision about how you, what you want to do with them.
I think that's a good idea, Bonnie. Actually, I do remember the discussion you referred to with the comp plan. I didn't remember part of that discussion being turning a blind eye. And you know, I'm not interested in hunting down people who have hosting their grandmother for ten years. But it's not a, it's not an old problem. It's.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you, I've had.
Brand-new instances of it.
Well, yeah, no, agreed. But I mean, I've had two complaints that I can think of in the last year or so where people said, you know, blah, blah, blah is happening, to which they objected. And it turned out in both circumstances that, you know, rightly or wrongly, people had a permit and a business license and all that stuff to allow what was happening. Now, you know, was that permit, was it wrongly issued decades ago or whenever it was issued? Quite possibly. But, you know, if, I mean, if if that's the issue we want to take on.
Well, I think the, as with the beach parking thing, the first step is to get information, I think. And I look your idea.
Great.
Yeah. So, Robin, we have a question and I'm going to paraphrase it here regarding the source water protection provision in the code and how was it overlooked for twelve years? Any insight into how that managed to get overlooked?
I I wasn't involved in back then when it was in again, I guess.
You weren't even on.
Correct. I mean, because I think that was back started in two thousand and eight. Is that when the? Yes. So I I don't know how that came about not, again, from two thousand and eight. You know, not being addressed.
Okay, but it wasn't picked up by staff in the meantime, as we're not doing this or until more recently.
Until recently, this came about, I think in two thousand and eighteen, I think.
Eighteen, I think it was, yeah.
And then I think, again, not being in my position at the time, I wasn't involved in the discussions of yay or nay how it's, you know, was moving forward after that. So I would only be speculating on why.
Okay.
I once, I once defended a case where the agency hadn't hadn't done what it was supposed to do with a particular statute for for thirty years. And trying to figure out what that statute even meant was a challenge. Because there was, nobody was around anymore that remembered its passage, but, you know, it's Quill, Rick Quill is asking a perfectly reasonable question. I just don't think there's anyone in these squares that knows the answer.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, all the people on the.
I got it.
So it's clear.
Tim, did you have a question?
I did, but I think Andrew had, Andrew, did you start to say something?
No.
No. Yes, I'll ask my question. I'll ask my question. You mentioned earlier about, I believe it would be a land surveyor doing a survey of the property after it's constructed to confirm that the building height is compliant with the, you know, the code and that the heat pump is located high enough off the grade, so it's not in the, you know, it's above the floodplain or whatever. Does that survey that is done by the professionals, does that include any measurement of stair tread height or any other components of the building? Or is it just really establishing setbacks, making sure that there's conforming conformity with the side setback, the rear setback, you know, the setback off the street, that kind of thing, building height?
The stairs are noted on the surveys. As far as whether again, just in general, stairs, open porches, and decks cannot encroach into the side yard setbacks. They can up to ten feet into the rear and front yard setbacks. So they have to be noted on the surveys to ensure that they're not within, especially in the side yard setbacks. So it's noted on there as far as where they're at.
Wait, I mean, right there, let me interrupt you. Excuse me. When they're, when they're noted by the surveyor, is the surveyor strict, is he just documenting what he finds in the field? Or is he also interpreting the code? Who is doing the interpretation?
The the building department. Once, once we get that information, we review it, make sure that it is compliant to the code.
Okay, so that would include, in fact, also the requirement of who is the specific element I'll illustrate with is driveway widths. Who is responsible for making sure that driveway widths are compliant with our ordinance?
The building department, the building department.
Okay, that's not in the surveyor's purview. Is that correct?
No, because the surveyor, there again, there's so many different municipalities with so many different requirements. The surveyor is only going out plotting what's on that property. And it is.
Right.
Yeah, it's the city's responsibility to make sure it's compliant.
Huh. So along the same lines of the same of that question, there's the, we've had a lot of concern about lot coverage.
Yes.
Both of of accessory structures or impermeable surface versus the structure of the building. And obviously, today, it seems like every homeowner wants to build, they're not asking, you know, what's, you know, what kind, what kind of house can I build here? They're saying, how big can I build it? We seem to be building as big as structures and covering as much of lots as we can. How how is that? Talk to us a little bit about how that is addressed.
Good question.
Unfortunately, it's it's addressed by the code. If the code says they're allowed to build the.
No, I know that, but.
Yeah, again, and we don't go into a conversation with with a builder or with anyone saying, well, it would be great if you only build it this big. You know, again, I think that that should probably be addressed from the city's end. Do we want to lessen that? Do we do, you know, again, but as far as if 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 a contractor or if an owner wants to build his accessory building five foot from the property line and is allowed to do it by code, I think we're somewhat obligated to make sure that that they're allowed to do it. And it was unfortunate, it may be. But do we just have to make sure that going through the process that that end result is still compliant with the code?
I agree with the setbacks and all of that, and we. I agree with the setbacks and all of that. And we may change some of those eventually. But the question becomes one of, at the time when a plan is submitted for construction and before it gets permit is, is, is issued, are you guys, are, is the department looking to see, does it, is it within the 60-foot lot coverage?
Yes, yes, we are. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Again, and, and what we do, again, say, say if it's, if you've already got a dwelling on the property and you want to put an accessory structure, we require a survey noting where that accessory structure goes, is going. So we can check lot coverage and we could check setback requirements and height requirements.
There've been a lot of concerns expressed by neighbors and, and friends or neighbors and, you know, in, in, where new construction has gone about lot coverage and, and we hear that, I hear it fairly.
I, I understand, yeah. And Bear, me and you have had many conversations about it. And I, and I understand, and it's, I can't go back unfortunately and, and right the, some of the wrongs that have happened. All we can do is I, I try to move forwards and put some policies in place. We now have checklists that we use for when we do plan reviews. We have checklists for when we do inspections that weren't available several years ago. We're trying to set up new policies to make sure we are eliminating, eliminating or at least minimizing any type of, any type of issues.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I would say, I think under Robin's capable guidance and management, the, the building officials' office really has become much more professional. I mean, no offense to anyone who came before, but I think he's put a lot of energy into making it more professional and, and more systematic in its approach, and I applaud that.
Yeah, agree.
I thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Any other questions for Robin? I think this is helpful discussion.
Oh, thank you very much. What Bonnie says, of what I, I do think this is a, a very useful beginning to a conversation that I hope will, will recur as you get trained in the software, as you come up with perhaps a list of what Bonnie was saying. The long overlooked violations. So the, the council can, can, can think about how we would like to proceed.
Yeah.
Understand, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. But by the same token, absolutely, Rob, but council should, you know, we should, rather than this be scattershot, I mean, because what I don't want to see happen is each councilperson say, gosh, you know, that's a particular concern of mine. We should talk about it and come up with, if, if there's information we want from Robin and his folks, you know, come up with a, a, a list with dates and things so that they've got, they've got some appropriate guidance.
Are you thinking that we, we need an agenda item on a future agenda to, to agree on what to ask Robin?
Well, I, no, because I, I don't, I don't have anything to ask Robin. But, but clearly other people do. All I'm saying is, yeah, if we want to put, make it an agenda item, terrific.
Or perhaps.
Or submit it directly to Anne Marie and she can.
Let's get it, let's get items that we want to see to Anne Marie and then we can think about how we put it on an agenda to just talk about it.
Perhaps we should, we should at least ask that Robin note violations that come to his attention so that he can bring them to Anne Marie's attention.
Okay. Yeah, I think one of the, one of my takeaways is, is, you know, we could make much better use of the code enforcement's officer if we had the Edmunds equipment in the vehicle, so he could, wouldn't have to keep running back to the building to determine what's going on. Here's a case where we can use technology to make the job better and also make code enforcement's job more effective. So I think.
More effectively, yeah.
Acting on that, I assume Anne Marie's acknowledging that they're already working on it, that this is something we're going to see fairly soon. I see Ellen Lorraine shaking her head, yes. So hopefully that's, that's something that's already built into the budget, so.
Thank you, Rob, Ben.
Thanks a lot, Robin.
Yes, no problem. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's move on to I, to item C six, which is a presentation of possible action on ordinance of chapter 167, article se, six regarding access to city streets and alleys. Rob, you, you, you asked the dispute on the agenda, would you want to care to talk about this?
Sure, I drafted it. In fact, I think it's one sentence. I forget what it says. But the idea is that the building office has granted building permits where the design of the house has a garage that can only be accessed from public land. And although that doesn't give the landowner a prescriptive easement because you can't get it against a municipality, as we know, as a matter of law, as a practical matter, who wants to block somebody from or impede somebody in accessing a garage that was permitted? So it seemed to me, after talking with Robin, who said they have no, the, the building office really has no discretion to deny such a permit, that it would, and I asked him where this would belong in the code and he gave me advice that I think Anne Marie signed off on. It seemed to me prudent to give the building office guidance that they should not permit a garage that requires access through public, through city land. That's the purpose of this sentence.
Okay, discussion at the table?
I, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble. Rob, can you, can you give me an example of where this is happening or might happen? I'm just, I'm having a little trouble conceptualizing the problem.
Sure, there are, I, one, perhaps two street, paper streets on Cape Penlope and Drive where exactly this has occurred, where the garage has a side entrance off the public land.
Off, off a paper street?
Right.
Yes. Public land.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you've got the same problem over here on Debris Circle, where there's a, there's a mythical alley that runs around Debris Circle and people, the only way people could get to the garages that they have off of it is to go down you public lands or it, it, it's a platted alley.
Right.
I mean, are you saying that those people would be cut off from?
No, it, it's prospective.
Well, is this limited to a, to a paper street issue? Because we only have, what, five remaining paper streets?
No, and well, there, there are still, I, I believe a couple of paper streets on Cedar Street. It also affects the beach accesses.
Well, but the, 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 the paper streets that, if I remember correctly, the paper streets that are left on Cedar are left there specifically because we need them for frag mighties. And there was some other. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're there for a reason. So. So is, is that it? I mean, is this really limited to?
No. You asked for an example, I gave you.
Okay. Before I, before I agree to something, I, I want to understand what I'm regulating.
Sure. The open space on Cedar Street is also public land. And there are houses that, I, I think there's a couple, I can't remember exactly, that have garages that access the open space, which has the effect that, unless we want to be really nasty about it, we're, we're not going to be able to use that open space for any other, for any public purpose. Because the landowner adjacent who has put his garage to open onto it has no other way of getting into his house or into that garage. And there's a third example is the beach access points. There are, and, and the, the building office has told me at least that they have no discretion to deny this. On the, the beach access points, I believe there are two houses that have garages that open onto beach access. That means that those beach accesses are narrowed by that amount, by the necessity to allow a, a reasonable.
I assume that, I assume that this ordinance will be prospective only.
That's correct. If it's permitted, I mean, I shouldn't say that's correct. It's within the city's power to take back its land for any reason at any time. You know that, that's, that's just municipal law. But it, as far as the permitting process goes, is prospective only.
We say something in here that, that, I mean, because you're talking about people's access to their garages, right? Should we say something in here specifically explaining that we are waiving this, that right with respect to these existing situations?
I don't think we need to because we have permitted them. And I, just as we are approaching Lewis Beach, if anything is permitted, we figure, you know, we're just not going to deal with.
Well, I, I mean, I'm.
I'm not sure that we know every single one that's permitted though.
Absolutely, and I'm.
But the assumption is that it was permitted, right?
Well, but we don't know. I mean, some of these, over here on Debris Circle have probably been here for 50 years.
Right.
That's why I'd be a lot more comfortable, since the, the intent is not to reach back, I'd be a lot more comfortable if we grandfathered.
I'd be happy with that, Bonnie.
Or if we said something like, any new, the, new site plan that involves crossing over public land, you exclude it that way, that way, the, the assumption is any that's there is okay.
That sounds.
Yeah, or something like, from the effective date of this ordinance, no, you know, no permits shall be issued, which, you know, would, blah, 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 I mean, however it's written.
From the effective, from and after the effective date of this ordinance or something like that.
I think that that probably.
Comfortable with that.
Yeah. We, we have a question from Dennis Riordan and he's got his hand raised and he didn't type it in. So I think we need to hear from him. Anne Marie, if you could let him in, thank you. Dennis, we've got you. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me, Ari?
Yeah, we're good. Go ahead.
I, I really have a, a, a problem with this because we're talking about alleys on the beach where you would have to cross a right of way to get into an alley, which allows people to go up to the back of their homes and park their cars, which would allow more parking on the streets. And I honestly believe that this has more to do with the beach parking committee issue as opposed to correcting any situation. The, the beach is, is something that has evolved over the years. And to implement something like this is going to create chaos on the beach. And the beach access points have been used to access garages, not just along Bay Avenue, but on Cape Penlope and Drive. And I'm not really sure what the purpose of this is. It, it seems to me that it's senseless. The city has approved, hey, Rob, I, it's my turn. It, it, to me, it's senseless. The city has approved many of these things in the past. And now you want to talk about it being prospective, but when we talk about other issues on the beach parking, you want to make them retroactive. Let's, let's be consistent. Let's do what's in the best interest of the city of Lewis. Let's do what's in the best interest of the people that live here. This, this ordinance, I, I would suggest should not be passed. It really is, I, I would almost say vindictive as opposed to being constructive. And I better stop because I get angry about these kinds of things that attack the people that live here. It's a matter of the beach being the beach. And it is not, if you're going to apply these standards, do it in this, in the entire city. Do you want to talk about encroachment? Do you want to talk about alleys? These things are citywide, not just the beach. So if you want to impose these kind of standards on the beach, then you really need to address the issue of imposing them on the entire city. How can you access a paved surface on a street without crossing a right of way? I don't know how you can do that, whether it be on Cedar Street, a connector street or in town. If you're, if you leave your property line, you can't access a paved surface of a road without crossing a right of way. It just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Mayor, I'd be happy to answer Dennis, but I don't want to get into an argument with him.
Okay.
Is, is Dennis through?
He's still here, but go ahead.
Well, I'll, I, it's not appropriate for me to be arguing with a member of the public.
Why not? Why not? I'll go over to your, I'll go over to Cape Shores. Can you get into your driveway without crossing a right of way, Rob? Let's apply the standard throughout the city, not just in one area.
Okay.
I can't apparently discuss this without being interrupted by Dennis, so I'll, I'll just pass.
Okay, Dennis, I think we're going to let, we're going to let this go here. Okay. All right. So we, we've heard Dennis's comments.
I suggest we defer this to another meeting.
We can defer this to another meeting.
Because we have an emotional member of the public weigh in at length.
Okay. All right, I, that's fine. We can defer this. We'll put it on a future agenda. Hopefully in the meantime, we get some further clarification. I do think that what Bonnie was talking about and what, the way that I was hearing this was that it would, would apply to any any pub, any street, not just, or any public access, not just things on the beach. I did, that's what I heard. Is, is that what you meant? Is that what your question was, Bonnie?
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, the way it's written, obviously it, it, it applies everywhere. But I think that the point that Dennis is making is, is equally true everywhere, was the point I was kind of making about the debris circle issue.
Exactly.
You know, there, there are just uses that have grown up through the years that I, I don't think it's the intention of this council to undo. I do think from a drafting standpoint, I, 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 you know, I think I understand what Dennis is saying, which is, if, you know, if you go, you, you obviously have to go over, if your dri, your driveway goes through the city's right of way. It has to. So I, and I think the way that was intended to be dealt with was to say it, to enter an unpaved street right of way. But I, I do think it, it's a little confusing in the sense of, you know, because there's, there's, there's street, driveway, you know, sidewalk. I, I think, I think I see where, where Dennis was going there. But, but my main point, just to, to answer you, Ted, is, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anyone is talking about undoing something that exists. I, I would not be in, in favor of that. I think you have all kinds of practical, I mean, leaving aside quality of life issues, you have all kinds of practical problems if you tried to cut people off from their garages.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it, these, the, the paper streets that have been zoned open space, they're, they're out of play anyway. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, they're.
Make a point of order, please. Have we decided to defer this issue?
Yes, we.
Stop the discussion and move on, please.
And I wait, I'm happy to move on.
We're happy to move.
Thank you.
All right, so then let's move on to item sub, item C seven, which is presentation of possible action on a recommendation by the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to object to the passage of HB 36, which would lift this, the sunset on the state statute that does not require cyclists to stop at stop signs if the intersection is clear of vehicles. Andrew, do you have any comment on this? We do have.
My understanding is that the Bike and Pedestrian Committee were looking for the. Um, I, my understanding is that the Bike and Pedestrian Committee were looking for the council to essentially support their position uh, that it not sunset, um, I think. And I think there have been some letters that came in, basically just highlighting the fact that, I think the assumption is that bikers uh, are treated like pedestrians and that bike, cars should stop for bikes.
Right.
That's not in fact the case, um, so I think the, th- this committee was looking for, um, you know, essentially the city that's, to mirror their position uh, from a safety standpoint. I didn't know, um, I.
I think we have Jim Wheeler with us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there, there, I think there's some participants.
Wheeler was going to join us tonight, he was gonna comment about this. Um, Emery, can you?
It, I think it's James Wilson with Bike Delaware.
James Wilson, I'm sorry, James Wilson, yeah, thank you.
So I.
Wilson, thank you for joining us.
So he should be unmuted now.
He is unmuted, thank you.
Can, uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we're good, thank you.
So, so thanks for the opportunity to, to talk to you for just a moment or two, uh, I will be, um, I will be very brief, given the late hour. My, my name is James, my name is James Wilson, uh, for over a decade, I've served as the full-time executive director of Bike Delaware, which is a statewide, uh, member-supported, five oh one C three nonprofit charitable organization dedicated to making cycling and walking safe, convenient, and fun transportation options in Delaware. And we do that through policy research and nonpartisan advocacy. I, I, I'm speaking to you today representing our members all across Delaware, as well as Bike Delaware's very distinguished board of directors, which includes the former mayor of Newark, uh, which was Delaware's very first bicycle-friendly community, uh, for many years, it was the only one in Delaware. Um, and also the former chief engineer of, of Del Dot, who joined our board, uh, just a few days after he retired from Del Dot. You know, if I, i- if you, if you're interested, I would be, uh, you know, happy to get into sort of why, why Delaware's safe yielding law is important from a traffic operations point of view, exactly why it's a, it's a, it's a critically important safety countermeasure. But, but just given that, you know, it's ten eleven and, 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 and I need to get to the, the key point that I want to get across here. It's, it's what I put in the comments. So the, the, the re, the, the reason House Bill thirty-six exists is because there, there is a sunset provision uh, in the law, and that was put in there at the request of the Delaware State Police in two thousand seventeen. And their argument at the time was, there was only one other state in America that had a similar rule, and even though it had been in place in that state for thirty-five years, uh, you know, it was Idaho, and Idaho is not Delaware, and the state police, being the conservative organization they are, they're like, we need the data. We, so we're gonna work, we're gonna do this, but there is going to be a sunset provision, we're gonna get the data, and if there's any problem that we see in the data, we're, you know, we're gonna let the thing expire, and we're gonna go back to the way we did things before. Well, now we have the data from the Delaware State Police, and what we found is an over twenty percent reduction in crashes involving bicycles and vehicles at stop sign-controlled intersections. So a lot of times, you know, you know, as I've been hearing, I, I've listened to your entire meeting today, uh, you know, you have to make decisions where you don't have any data, where you have to use your common sense and, and your experience. Uh, but this isn't a case where the data actually exists. Uh, it's, it's, it's sort of a really nice situation where, you know, we don't have to go on what feels right, or we think, the, the way we, you know, intuit the world works. We actually have the data about how it works. And Delaware's safe yielding law is really important to, uh, reduce crashes and keep people from getting hurt. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. So I think it sounds, but it's interesting that there is data, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Comments from the table?
Can I ask a question of Andrew? As I understand it, because you're bike, as I understand it, the Bike Ped Committee wants us to, the whole deal here is whether or not the city council should weigh in at all on what happens with the state law, right?
Right.
And the, as I understand, well, could you do this, two questions? Say again what it is that our local group dealing with our local bike conditions and trails and all the rest of it recommended, and why, uh, in response to Mr. Wilson's, um, point?
My understanding is that they don't, they they do want, uh, bikes to stop, so the idea that they, you know, we would still have this provision where they wouldn't have to stop at stop signs, um, i- i- am I correct, Mr., where, that, that's, you do want it to sunset, I mean, you don't, you do want the, um, the provision to sunset?
We, we, we want the sunset provision canceled, and, and and, and I, what I didn't say was that the concerns about the trail crossings are all absolutely legitimate. Uh, Del Dot has contracted with a national engineering firm named Tool Design, so they have a memo in their hand from sort of nationally well-known engineering and planning experts about how to design, physically design these things. And those things need to happen because you have, you know, the, you know, your, your crossings are not as well-designed as the Markel Trail crossings up in Newcastle County, where there are no problems, nobody is complaining, there are no issues. And, and you need some engineering i- interventions at all at those various crossings. But that is a completely different issue from the state sa, state yielding law, which applies to two thousand stop sign-controlled intersections all over the state.
Well, that's, are we aware of any move to, I mean, assuming you're right, Mr. Wilson, to re-engineer? And if not, because obviously that's not going to be cheap. If not, shouldn't we err on the side of having people stop if our crossings? Because presumably the, your data reflects other crossings that are engineered in the way you've described, and therefore would up the safety quotient, but we don't have that here. So shouldn't we err on the side of going with our local, uh, bike committee's recommendations? Because they ride these trails all the time.
What I was trying to say was that you're, there are two different issues. So the Delaware State Police did a, did a, did a four, uh, sixty-month study on before and after the law passed and found a twenty percent drop in personal injury classes at, at the thousands of stop sign-controlled intersections all across the state. That's what the state's safe yielding law is about. It's about keeping people safe and reducing injuries at all of our stop sign-controlled intersections. Separately from that, at each of the road crossings for the Lewis to Georgetown Trail, you have to have careful engineering, which is similar to what has been successfully done at the Markel Trail up in Newcastle County. So that at each of those intersections, you know, you do what you need to do to make sure, you know, you have a, you have a, a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, you have a speed table, you have bollards, you have, uh, you know, speed bumps. Whatever you need to do for either the behavior of cyclists, or the behavior of drivers, or both, to make sure that you have a safe crossing. That is an engineering, those are a series of engineering questions that are separate from the question of the value of the safe yielding law, which is reflected in the state police's statistics.
Okay. So the most effective way for us to direct, to, to, to make, to address this would be to write a letter, I suppose, regarding this HB, uh, HB thirty-six? Supporting it?
Well, so what?
Or not.
Or not.
Not supporting.
So what the.
Supporting the not.
Right, so what Mr. Wilson's suggesting is that you support the bill. I think what the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee was suggesting is that we oppose the bill.
Exactly.
So we, pretty much.
We take a position opposing, opposing the adoption of the bill.
Correct. Right, so we have three choices that we either support, oppose, or just don't.
Leave it alone.
Don't do anything.
We have no, I don't think we have, uh, we have some accidents, some incidents where minor, where there's been some injury, but nothing at major crossings.
I guess, yeah, we want to see what Chief Spell has to say. I, I think one of the challenges, and, and I think Mr. Wilson mentions the, the two thousand stop signs. And those typically are on roads in neighborhoods, and, and I know one of the things that we are struggling with here in Lewis is why do we have stop signs if there are no cars and bikes aren't required to stop? So what's the purpose of a stop sign? I mean.
And the other, the, Emery, the other issue I'll raise is that with our trail crossings, the stop signs are on the trails, not on the public, on the vehicle roads.
That's right.
And, and that makes, that's a huge, the problem is the users of the trails are practicing riding the trails as if they're in s- subdivisions where there's no traffic.
Right.
You know, so there's a big disconnect here.
So do we, so the chief's still on? Chief, do you, do you have any thoughts, given that your guys are out there and?
Wait.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm a little mixed, to be honest. You know, there's, my biggest concern would be the resulting reconfusion. That's not even a word I just made up, but, you know, how do we re-educate bicyclists that aren't stopping anyway?
Right.
That the new rules have now, you know, you're now possibly switching back to the old rules, which aren't followed anyway. Uh, at least now there's some parameters around their conduct. You know, in, in the, in that law, you know, it's under certain conditions, uh, you know, I think I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm a little mixed. I, I, I don't think it's, uh, here in Lewis anyway, a terrible, uh, rule as it stands now. You know, the enforcement of those offenses are, are extremely difficult anyway.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, the other thing is, I, I think we all need to sort of consider what we've seen and what we haven't seen. I mean, um, probably, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've, as a car, as being in a car, have stopped at a stop sign, four-way stop, and had a line of bicyclists go run right through. Sometimes they wave, which is.
Right.
Not as in, not as in, don't run me over, I said, hi, we're breaking the law, do you mind? I mean, and, and again, I'm not, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to pillory all bicyclists with my couple of times that I've seen this. Uh, I mean, I think the tear here is, nobody really expects a bicyclist to stop at a stop sign if there's, if, if they're in a neighborhood and there's nobody coming. I mean, that, that defies common sense. The problem is when that's the rule, and we have these trails that go through, across these major highways.
Right.
The other problem is, and this is, I think I can, I, I don't have, this is just an observation, is you, you have two other things happen, which is the way the signs are um, for the trail crossings, they make it look like the car is supposed to stop. So you have these cars that don't know what to do because it says stop, and it means for the pedestrians, but it's also got a bike icon. So you have these cars stopping in the middle of these major streets, which, you know, is a surprise to the cars behind them.
Right.
Or you have people who are being courteous, and they stop, and they say, go ahead bicyclist. Or you simply have bicyclists that just, but mow right through, and you better stop for them. And, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is here, but it is, it is a very unsafe situation the way it is now. And, and I don't know if that's the law or behavior or what, but it, it's not good.
I don't want to suggest that a rectangular rapid flashing beacon is, is the universal solution at every one of these crossings. But, uh, the Markel Trail that goes between Wilmington and Newcastle has two road, at-grade road crossings, and, and, and at both of those crossings, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon signal is used, and it, it, it seems to solve most or all of these concerns. It's, you know, you, 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 the cyclist presses the button, the, the signal goes, and everybody knows that, that then it's time for the cyclist to go. There are other, there are other possible alternatives to engineering options. As I said before, Del Dot has hired a nationally prominent engineering firm that have written them a memo uh, that touches on each and every one of the at-grade road crossings of the Lewis to Georgetown Trail. And, and as mu, I haven't seen the memo, we've been trying to get our hands on it for months, but, uh, Del Dot has been, uh, keeping it, uh, closely held. But my understanding is that there is a, a proposal, you know, ideas in, for each of those road crossings. There are, there are lots of ideas besides rectangular rapid flashing beacons that can be used and are used all over the country successfully.
Well, that's great, plus you happen to live right there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I do, I wonder if the Markel Trail has anybody, any of those rapidly flashing beacons in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
The other thing I'll, the other thing I'll speak to is the fact that, uh, biking is eco-terrorism. And we have people coming in from all over the region, possibly all over the nation, possibly all over the world, who ride bikes according to other laws. And I think the Delaware laws and practices, certainly the practices, are not typical of what's practiced in other areas. I think that's a fair statement.
What, what the Delaware State Police data show is that the, when those out-of-state visitors come, if they ride a, according to, you know, to their, to the non-safe yielding laws, they will be riding in a less safe way. Whereas if they happen, somebody happens to tell them that this is actually the law here in Delaware, they will be riding more safely. That's just what the Delaware Police data says.
It would be very interesting to see what they do with the at-grade crossing that's going, or I know there's already talked about creating a non-at-grade crossing as, uh, the trail to Georgetown crosses Route nine.
Right.
That's the.
An elevated crossing.
Non-grade separated crossings, that, that's the gold standard, but there, but there are also less expensive, plenty, a whole menu of ideas and options for the at-grade road crossings as well.
Yeah. Well, Route nine is going to be a major issue as, as that trail crosses it. Uh, and I, I do know there's, there's been discussion about doing an elevated crossing there.
Right. That was in the paper recently, I believe.
So, so we can, we can follow the, uh, request of the Bike Ped Committee and send, some, send a letter, uh, regarding HB thirty-six, uh, one way or the other. Uh, if we're doing it as they have requested, we would be, uh, trying to ensure that the requirement to stop continues.
Well, could I make a suggestion? Um, what, what, what I would suggest we do, and I'll make a motion, I guess, but, all right, I'll, I'll just move it. Uh, I, I would move that we support the recommendation of, uh, our Bicycle Pedestrian Committee and write a letter, uh, in which we, we, you know, we say, don't sunset it, or do sunset it, do sunset it. Yes, do sunset it, but that if, if the state nonetheless goes ahead and keeps it in place, the sunsetting gets a little confusing. Go on place that, that Del Dot, uh, come down here and, uh, look into some, some, and pay for uh, some of these appropriate to a residential area, um, engineering, uh, aspects that, that Mr. Wilson is talking about.
Okay.
Because you can't have, I mean.
We could even ask them to consider those bollards while they're here, too.
Sounds like we need more bollards, not fewer.
So we have a motion from Bonnie.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? It's getting really late. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Sorry you had to wait so long. Looks like he's already left. Okay, so the last item, Chief, thank you for waiting so long as well, is the presentation of possible action on a request to hire one to two additional police officers. Chief, I, uh, you want to talk to us a little bit about that? I think we've already had some discussion regarding the need, potential need.
Yeah, tha, thank you, Mayor, I just have a, just a very short, uh, uh, comment, I guess, on it. Um, you know, as your police chief and senior law enforcement officer, I, you know, respectfully have requested the additional two officers, uh, to our ranks. As a police agency, everybody knows we've been staffed at, or at times even below, uh, thirteen police officer, officers since nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, as the police chief, I can tell you that we strive and desire to be staffed with a minimum of two on-duty patrol officers per. Per shift, so we can adequately service and protect the citizens, our business, and our visitors. Over the past several years, we've not met this standard, forty-five percent of the time during the daylight hours and thirty-five percent of the time at night. I'm asking the increase based on my thirty-plus years of law enforcement. And as your chief for the last five years. I believe that we're not meeting our own standards adequately to service our citizens. Additionally, I'm very concerned with the increase in officer fatigue, the increase in stress for police officers. And several safety concerns that have been expressed by our, our officers pretty recently. And I certainly don't want to end up in this position six months or a year from now. You know, again, over the last twenty years, Lewis has grown, both in popularity and as a destination. Increase in people, while once confined to three months, I think it's pretty clear that it's almost year-round. And certainly more people are living and visiting Lewis. Again, you know, we're unique, we have a beachfront, we have a state park that attracts a million and a half vehicles a year. The majority of them enter from the Lewis side. We've became a Lewis ferry, two hundred and seventy thousand vehicles a year. Seven hundred and fifty thousand passengers a year, all those people are coming through Lewis to get there or to leave the ferry. Obviously, we also have our region's largest hospital. You know, I previously highlighted our future staffing needs with respect to potential and probable retirement. I've made you aware of the time required to hire and formally train new police officers. And I believe as your top law enforcement official, that now it's necessary. It's a necessary time to hire two additional officers to ensure that we're properly staffed. And put us in a position to succeed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Questions for the chief?
I'd just like to make a comment that. This has been a few months where we've talked about this and there's been some shortages in staff. And. We've asked the chief multiple times about whether he was, had enough staff to, to staff up and it's, you could. Tell he's been working on, it seems like bootstrapping it together, trying to put together a schedule. So in my mind, he needs at least the one. And. As someone who's had to build teams in the past and hire and go through interviews and. I think it's important to build a pipeline and also not just staff up for what you've got, as I said. Plan for the future because some may be thinking about retiring, they may move on for other reasons as we've seen. So to me, I think, as I said, the one, probably the two is worth, is. Worth looking at.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Couple of questions, Mayor.
I, I second everything Andrew said. And I also think that, given the possibility of just normal and foreseeable attrition. We may end up, I don't know that this is even going to be one or two more. This may end up, you know, a year from now, simply being a backfill. And I also, I endorse. As I have in the past, the, the, the staffing concept of having two people. Available, either on duty or available during the daytime, you know, as the police committee looked into this, during the daytime, you've got. In most circumstances, you've got people back at the office, be it the chief or the lieutenant or, or what have you. Who, who could assist if an officer needed backup. Nighttime's a different issue, we don't have that. So I do. Endorse, just on a common sense basis, the, the two officers on duty slash available. At all times, so.
Thank you. Okay, Rob, you had a couple of questions.
I do. Chief, what are your, what is your staffing now? You've got. Chadum's off. Recovering from his surgery. What else, who else, you're down. From thirteen, how far? You're at eleven. And that's including Chadum or not?
Including Chadum.
So. So you're really at ten? And you're, you're authorized at thirteen?
I think that's the number. I think we had some debate about knowing exactly what that number is, but that's the staffing level we've been at.
And you're asking not only to hire two, to get to thirteen, but two more to get to fifteen?
Correct.
And your current recruitment process is, is what? You, you've, you've got some. You, you say you had a thinner pool than you have had in past years, that's a national trend, I think you said.
It is.
And from that pool, you've identified five of whom. A couple are, we hope certified enough to not take too much time in the academy and a couple are not.
That's accurate.
This is really more a question to Anne Marie. Anne Marie, what, what admin functions have we shifted from the police department in the last? Year?
Um, I would say. So we, we have hired a person who. Is responsible for HR, but there are certain HR functions. That have to remain within the, the police department because of the law enforcement officer's bill of rights, so. And, and obviously. In terms of hiring and training, the, the police department is the, the lead on that. We, the police department does its procurement for police-specific items. And the city hall side does procurement for those things that are not specific.
And that's new, isn't it? That's a shift?
Is that, that's not a shift?
Not really.
With, with having Allison as the. As the facilities person. I think the, there's very little that they need to do anymore in terms of facilities. Except obviously communicate when there's something that needs attention, but Allison deals with. Seeing through on all the, the contractors and everything. We are preparing to move the lifeguards. Out of police and to put them under the Parks and Marina Administrator.
And so. And also Internal Affairs got moved out of the department, but not to us, but. Internal Affairs is no longer a, an LPD. Function.
Well, that's not totally true. It's moved out for investigation, but there's still lots of internal processes. I'm obviously the, the final, where it rests finally.
Okay, so. Some IA, some HR, some purchasing, some IT, what about vehicle maintenance, Anne Marie?
Vehicle maintenance, um, so we, we perform. I think, well, we, we've now got the equipment that we can run the diagnostics. On the police vehicles, so we can do more in-house, but it. Those aren't the things that the police were doing anyway. I think you have, Brent is responsible for your fleet, right? And, and a lot of what he's doing is making sure that things get to go to service and. You know, just overseeing the process that. While the service may be performed either in-house or at a, at a shop. And we're trying to do more in-house, they still coordinate the, the vehicle. Maintenance and, you know, cleaning and all of those things within the department.
Is the city doing more or more vehicle, the vehicle maintenance responsibility or no more?
I, I don't think it, it's changed, the, the, the only place where it would have changed is. What we send out for maintenance versus what our maintenance guys do in-house.
We're sending more out?
I think, no, we're trying to do more in-house.
In the facilities department? Not in the police department? Then, and you said that we're going to be moving. Lifeguards. And that we, I think in the budget process, we're talking about whether or not we're going to move parking enforcement?
Yes, at this point, we have not planned to move parking enforcement.
Okay, then, I'm looking back at the, the minutes of the meeting that. Bonnie chaired in November, a little over a year ago. And it said, Lieutenant Zada also talked about the IT function stating that this takes a lot of his time. So it takes less of his time now, I guess, because we do some more of the IT.
We have an IT consultant who comes in and he does the preventative maintenance, he does if there's. Any major install that needs to happen, but he comes in. Every couple of weeks, he, he's not here daily, so when things come up in, in between his visits. You know, he. Somebody has to do the troubleshooting.
Spent three complete days doing IT work.
What was that again, chief? What'd you say?
Just as an example, this week we converted our watch guard program over. And the lieutenant spent almost three complete days overseeing that and ensuring it was correct.
The IT consultant did, chief? And why not the IT consultant?
He wasn't available, he, he worked with the guy for a few hours, but that was it, by phone.
Okay. Then, also it says Lieutenant Zada indicated that lifeguards in parking are very time-consuming. There are daily issues that are dealt with. Throughout the summer, they spend a lot of time on parking enforcement. Whoever is on duty gets pulled into this. And then Sergeant Locklear on parking stated that during the summer, there are a lot of administrative support functions. That don't get delegated to share them. They are absorbed by the officers. So I'm. I guess. What I'm thinking is that. Well, and if we authorize two more, when will you start recruiting for them? Chief, are you going to look for them from the current pool?
Yes, from the current pool, and if that doesn't work out immediately.
And the current pool is five? So you'd be hiring four out of the five? Two of whom have to go to the service academy?
Potentially. I, I can't answer that question a hundred percent because that's not my decision.
It's Anne Marie's?
No, it's the Council on Police Training Administrator's decision.
Okay. I know we talked, when this item first came up, about the possibility of. Of not making a permanent staff increase, but of. Of saying, go ahead and hire a couple more in view of some imminent retirements. But I think, well, let me explore just a little bit more of the, the service academy aspect. We have had a recent experience with somebody we put through the service academy who's left us. And there's nothing we can do to prevent that, or at least I don't think there is.
That was after three years, but then, yes.
And so now we've got to. Replace, when I, we've already replaced him. If we hire. Four more, we know we're buying two services, at least two people who've got to go through the whole service academy. I, I'm thinking that this has major budget implications. We've got a, the budget process is just beginning. It's going to take a month. I would be very interested, even if we do authorize two permanent staff people. Two permanent people to be increased in the staff. In making that a little bit further deferred, so that we have another pool to, to choose from. So that we're not. Taking our third choice and fourth choice out of the five. But that we, we think about this in the budget process, and that's what the budget process, it seems to me, is for. So I'm inclined to suggest that we put this off into the police. Part of the budget process and explore it a little bit more deeply.
If I could just kind of, kind of respond, Rob, you know, we, we had a delay in hiring in April. And I know for a fact we lost five of those people that were in that potential applicant pool. To other agencies. The number one target, who was a kid that was just, looked like a superstar on paper and it turned out that he was. Is now the additional staff at Rehoboth Police Department that they have in the academy now. I lost another applicant to the Dover Police Department, and then three additional applicants hooked on with municipal agencies. I'm not sure where. But waiting doesn't always, always help either. I'm not going to hire anybody that's not the standard. That we need to be a police officer, so I'm comfortable in, in, in making that statement with great certainty. But sometimes waiting backfires as well. I think I have, have the experience and ability to make that decision based on the qualifications and experience.
So the pool will, you know, will lose some from the pool, but will gain some from the pool. I mean, the pool is constantly changing.
But that pool is, is somewhat finite, and if you delay, sometimes the good ones get picked and you're picking through the rest.
Well, I'm anxious, I'm rather anxious not to get rushed. This is a major decision.
Yeah, it's not a rush on our end. We, we carefully vet every applicant, do a full background investigation and. I, I would never recommend hiring somebody that's not qualified.
I'm sure you wouldn't, but nevertheless, we've got, we're being asked to approve the number three and number four. Of your choices. Again. Mayor, I'm inclined to, to deliberate more over this in the budget process. That's where it belongs.
All right. And speaking of the budget process, is it next week with that, we? Talk about the police department? When is that on the schedule?
Yeah, next Friday is the police department, um, so. I think the, the schedule we're up against is that. The paperwork needs to be into the academy by March twenty-fifth. So if we're talking wait till the budget process, meaning talk about it in more detail next week. I think that does give time if. If there's no authorization coming until March fifteenth, then we don't have the time. If provided we have four, and, and I think the chief's been clear on that. Provided we have four that have, have come through the vetting process strongly. We don't have the time between the fifteenth and the twenty-fifth to get the medical and the psyche eval done. To be able to get the paperwork in for the twenty-fifth. So if, if it's sometime between next week and the beginning of, of March, that's one thing, but if. March fifteenth, I think we missed the window. Is that?
Don't act as if we need to fall all over ourselves to hire four right away.
Okay. Timmy, or Andrew, you had a comment?
Question around whether we can take action at the budget meeting. So if we delay till next Friday, we have the conversation. We agree that the money's there, what have you, we, we've had more time to think on it. Since we have a, a quorum at the budget, could we take action then and there? Do we have to have a meeting, a public, regular public meeting?
Pulling up an agenda.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but what are we going to find out between now and next week?
I don't know.
What we have here, I mean, Rob, I've listened to what you have to say. On the budgetary standpoint, if we have these, if, if, if we have. Folks leave, there's, there's a net nothing, right? We're probably going to have more senior people leave than we're hiring, so actually replacing the. folks leave, there's, there's a net nothing, right? We're probably going to have more senior people leave than we're hiring. So actually, replacing the senior people with junior people will be budgetarily to the benefit of the city. If, I don't know what we're going to learn between now and then. The chief has, next week, the chief has been very clear that we're not talking about taking his third and fourth choices. He will only present to us those, that number of officers as candidates, whether it be one, two, three, or four, who he believes would be beneficial and productive and appropriate officers in the Lewis Police Department. So I have to say, I think we've got a staffing problem. The chief is right. We did stop the hiring process last April because of COVID. I just don't see any reason, given the need that the chief has outlined for a delay of a week, which will probably create nothing other than we'd lose an applicant or two.
Here's what I think we could learn, Bonnie. I think we ought to have a discussion of whether to follow the example of the other towns that we're familiar with. I, I think Anne Marie has it on the tip of her tongue. I think she's told us that none of the other towns that are comparable to us have parking enforcement administered by the police. And it's clear from what we, we learned in our committee that parking supervision, as well as lifeguard supervision, which is already being moved, take a lot of police time.
Yes, and what we learned in the committee, Rob, was that the chief said that it took a lot of police time at the chief level. What we're talking about here is hiring patrol officers.
I think that's not quite exact, Bonnie, because
It's my memory.
You recall that in the minutes, Lieutenant Azado said that whoever is on duty gets pulled into this. It's, the, the full quote is, throughout the summer, they spend a lot of time on parking enforcement. Whoever is on duty gets pulled into this. And Sergeant Locklear added that there are a lot of administrative support functions related to parking that don't get delegated to share them. They are absorbed by the officers.
Chief, would you like to, Chief, would you like to?
They save a lot of time of a lot of officers.
Okay, I don't think we're going to, you know, okay. Chief, do you want to comment on any of this?
Well, Bonnie's right, her perspective, or my perspective at those meetings, where that's a responsibility that I handle. But the fact that, you know, patrol guys are, are busy handling that stuff is even more work for them to do, which will never be relieved because we are policemen, and in the end, we have to do those things, no matter whether parking is with the police department or not with the police department. So it doesn't, it's not a net gain for us or a win for us by any stretch.
Okay.
That, that was going to be my point, is my understanding that parking enforcement ultimately comes to the police, because you have to tow someone, that only the police can make that call.
That's right. Right. All right. I think, we, I think we've heard both sides of the story. Is there a motion as to how to proceed on this, on this agenda item?
I have moved that we defer to the budget process, where it belongs.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I move that we authorize the chief to proceed as he has requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Andrew. So motion and a second to authorize the chief to go ahead?
I have a question, please. Let's put it to discussion.
All right.
Chief, you, in your, in the, I'm sorry, I'm so tired, I can't even think straight anymore. In the agenda item, the request is to hire one to two additional police. That suggests that there's some wiggle room there? Is that correct? Or is that just the way this was written?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not clear on the agenda. I know I proposed to initially. I'd like to stick with that at this point.
So I put it on the agenda, and it was because, again, the, the issue of it's possible you could authorize two additional, but if we don't have two additional qualified, you know, he's not going to, he's not going to hire more than we have qualified.
Okay, and there is a, there is a financial impact to this decision. I certainly respect what the chief has asked for. I understand that completely. I feel like I should, I think it would be prudent for us to ask Ellen Lorraine to speak to that, or possibly you can, well, whatever the answer is. I'd like to just understand what the consequence is for acting on this hire, this recommendation.
Well, I think in coordination with the chief, we have worked on what it costs to hire and train an officer, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's around a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, I was going to say ninety-seven, but you're right there.
Okay. And that's, that's for a rookie, is that correct, for someone who just wants to be a policeman, who's not a policeman now?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay. And then after they've gone through the, the academy, is, then it's just their salary and benefit package, is that, or is there, are there other costs that we need to be mindful of?
I mean, there's uniforms.
Yeah.
You know, payroll.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there any further questions or discussion?
Sorry about this, guys.
That's okay.
Yep.
All right, hearing no further questions. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Are you going to vote, Tim?
Uh, I'm tired. I don't really even know what to think right now, you know? I don't know what to say.
Tim, abstaining is perfectly, is perfectly
Yeah, thank you. You're right, Rob. I understand. Oh, jeez.
Okay, Tim.
We're, we're down to down four, actually. I, I'm sorry, I'm taking so long. I, I, I'm going to abstain. I'm sorry, I just can't, I can't think this through right now. I apologize.
And I will, and I will vote yay.
Okay.
So. Ares. Is there anything further to bring forward this evening? Hearing none, it's been a very long evening. I appreciate everyone's attention, and we've covered a lot of ground here this evening. A lot of people have stayed with us, fourteen of them in fact. And I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Tim, I thought you'd say yes to that. I thought you'd second that.
I second it. I second it.
All right. I don't think we need to call the vote on that. We are adjourned.
Yeah.
Chief, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you.